I apologize, this is all new to many of us. And we have our able IT director here looking, overlooking this process after the problems we had last week. So I will repeat this, I'm going to call the meeting of the Gloucester School Committee to order. It is Wednesday, August 18th. We are here at Gloucester High School in the library. This meeting is not open to the public, so, but we are here in person. This meeting is recorded by video and audio in accordance with the state open meeting law, consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning certain gatherings such that an in-person meeting of the school committee is not possible. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation. The meeting may not, the public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and listen to the meeting in real time and participate when necessary. If you call me on the phone and press star nine to request to speak, if you're watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand up that you can tap to press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. And we will now have a roll call for attendance, Maria.
Mayor Taken.
Here.
Ms. Watson.
Here.
Ms. Wilson.
Here.
Kathy Clancy.
Here.
Mr. Fabloza, not here yet. Chairman Hope.
Here.
And Ms. Prince.
Here.
So seven, six members are present, we have a quorum. And I'll ask you to join me in salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This evening, we are going to get a lot of information about the guy who's coming from the local health department, from the state, from the federal government, about the reopening of school. And because this is the main item on the agenda this evening, we're not going to take, during oral communications, we're not going to get input on the reopening of schools and the conditions that we're going to be looking at. We will, at our next meeting, one week from tonight, have a full public hearing where everybody will be able to speak as to their opinions or their facts about either vaccines or mask wearing. But tonight, we're just trying to make sure that we all have the same information and we can proceed, and we will take a vote on how we're going to proceed next week at the end of the public hearing. So, with that being said, oral communications. If there's anybody who, the public shall have the opportunity at every regular school committee meeting to be heard under oral communications. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to the school committee business to appear before the school committee, state their problem without debate, and the matter may be referred to the proper subcommittee. For items that are on the agenda, members of this public may address the committee with the permission of the chair. Persons speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each and shall submit a copy of their prepared communications to the recording secretary. The school committee chair should not allow complaints as to individual performance or character. And I would also just like to add that we have received a number of emails to the school committee in general, and we accept all of those. To date, I believe we have gotten two that are in favor of masking and one that's opposed. But they will be entered into the record. And I encourage people to use that form of communication as it's efficient. That being said, we're going to open up oral communications. And I'm going to recognize Patty Page.
Hi, thank you. Patty Page, Three Title Cove Way. I recently became aware of the city's pesticide management programs for schools and childcare centers in the city. Currently, state law permits schools and childcare centers to treat playgrounds and ballfields with pesticides. City schools are required to file a pest control plan each year with the state M D A R. These plans were last filed in 2019. Schools are required to have an IPM manager, integrated pest management coordinator, plans in place at each school location. Rodenticide boxes are used around school grounds and herbicides are used to treat school grounds. Rodenticides are harmful to raptors and pesticides are damaging to non-targeted species like bees and butterflies. Community pesticide reduction is a rapidly growing trend. Are we really aware of what the full scope of pesticide treatments are and what pesticides are being used at our schools? Many factors make children particularly susceptible to the effects of pesticides. Children absorb more pesticides relative to their body weight than adults, and children's exposure is typically greater by spending more time out in these treated areas. The Mass School Children Pesticide Protection Act, House 926, is currently in legislation. This bill will come before the ENRA at a public hearing in September. Citizens around the Commonwealth are asking for support in this legislation. The Northeast Organic Farmers Association, Mothers Out Front, Regenerative Farming, Forest and Food Systems are all working with local school committees, health departments, and parent-teacher groups across the state to support this bill. The renewal of the IPM plans that we need to do, along with this legislative piece, presents an opportunity for us to engage our student council representatives who are supposed to be appointed to the school committee to have a voice in how they want their playgrounds, ballfields, and school buildings managed when it comes to the use of pesticides in and around their learning and play areas. My request to the school committee tonight is to consider committing your support to this important legislative issue by submitting comments during the September public hearing. Please consider listing this on the agenda at the next school committee meeting. I am offering to facilitate in this matter. These are very important health issues that school committees are taking positions on. I appreciate you listening and considering that and like to email these. Could you tell me the best email contact for that? My written comments.
Okay, if you email it to Maria Paglisi.
Anna Paglisi.
Anne Paglisi at Gloucesterschools.com.
Anna Paglisi, alright, I'll get it.
Just a letter, Anne Paglisi.
Anne, okay, I got it.
At Gloucesterschools.com.
I'll find it, thank you very much.
Here's our recording secretary, thank you very much, it's a very important issue. Is there anybody else who would like to speak under oral communications? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to our next item.
Can we just say that what our email address is for people to contact us directly?
Sure. If people would like to contact the school committee, they can do that by emailing Gloucesterschoolcommittee@gloucesterschools.com. And that reaches all of us. Alright. Recognitions.
I want Samantha. Last night, I had the pleasure of attending the Countdown Kindergarten as a parent, finally. It was a lovely event, beautiful night. My daughter has been wearing her bright pink backpack every second of the day. So I'm very appreciative of all the, the organization, because I want time and effort to make that event happen.
Thank you. Okay, bye, I was there as well, Samantha, as you know. It was great to see you there with your family and your daughter. And I just want to echo that, I want to actually call out a few particular people because there are some individuals as well as organizations. So obviously, Pathetic for Children and Gloucester State Foundation did a tremendous job supporting, as they do every year, supporting County After Kindergarten. But we had PTO leaders as well helping out, and then just a whole bunch of local organizations helping us. In particular, I want to thank Amy Larson from Pathetic for Children, just really organized it, organized the whole team, all those different organizations and our staff as well. Just did a fantastic job communicating, organizing, and then pulling off a really wonderful celebration event last night. Thank you to the mayor for being there, Kathy Clancy was there as well. I don't think I'm missing anybody from this group. All our principals were there, so thank you for being, all our elementary principals and our kindergarten teachers were there as well. And then also from our staff, we really want to thank Christine Castle and Avery Jordan for their tireless efforts on this, which was a fantastic event. And the first time I was able to participate in this way. And it was nice to see people happy and smiling and kids excited and some a little apprehensive and some parents apprehensive, but that's what kindergarten, going to kindergarten is about. But folks were really excited and so were we. Thank you, Sam.
Any other recognitions? Melissa.
I just want to recognize whoever it is that is doing all the work for the development downstairs here in the high school and at O'Malley for the safety door entrance. I'm not quite sure, is it IDW that's directly involved with that or did it go out?
DPO is involved, definitely, but it's, it's, it's been, there were readers involved, I'm not going to know the names, but.
APC.
APC, other contractors. We also have a project manager, but it's been every week. James Cook and Principal Libbidi as well have been very, very involved and it's impacting a lot of folks, but it's, it's a great, a great change.
Yeah, we had the opportunity to look at it before we came here and we saw how the office is redesigned so that you, they can see right when the doors, people come in the doors, it's just exciting to have been talking about this project for a couple of years and to see it in place and now ready for school when it opens, so it's great.
Anything else? More things.
I wanted to recognize the teachers at Bean School for hosting a all-district engineering camp this summer. It's five weeks of engineering at an elementary level. And the curriculum is from the Museum of Science and was oversubscribed, as far as I understand. So many, many kids, almost 100 kids, got to take advantage of, you know, a week-long camp or they could also sign up for five weeks. The points are that everybody had a phenomenal time.
Anything else?
Are we going to get any update on how did our summer school go?
We're going to get an update next week on the summer programs, are you going to touch on that tonight?
I think we'll ask Greg Bach do that next week. You know, we have a lot scheduled for next week, but we'll try to put some stuff in, yes. If not, then, then we're going in, definitely.
I got good responses too.
Yeah, no, it went very, very well, many levels and more kids involved in, in, in more programs than ever. So very, very positive reviews, but we'll get more of an update from Mr. Bach.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that any member would like to remove for further discussion?
That we approve the consent agenda, that's it.
It's been moved to second, Maria, can we have a roll call vote?
I have a question.
A question.
Before we vote. Is this Maria Paglisi that's making this donation?
It's Maria Paglisi.
So I just want to recognize you before we vote and thank you very much for this. Thank you, Maria.
Do we need to do a roll call vote, Zooms forum?
Well, we're on Zooms now, we do, so, I think we do, we're high, Greg.
Okay. Mayor Taken.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Chairman Hope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
It carries unanimously. And we'll move on to deliberations on educational issues. And there's just one item on the agenda, and I will turn it over to the superintendent who will coordinate. We have a number of people here this evening, and I assume you'll introduce them as we go along.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I did intend to ask the committee prior, asking technically prior to, to see if we could move the handbook approval early on, do that first. Would that be okay with me?
Sure, without objection. And that is because we have a number of principals online here, correct?
Yep, so we have Amy Pasquarello and Dr. Slimimel, representing elementary schools. And then Principal, Principal Biddy from O'Malley and also Principal Cook is here in the room for Gloucester High School, right?
Yes.
Why don't we start with the K to five? And Ms. Pasquarello is going to capture, just sort of summarize the changes, not too many changes, but just summarize how many of them and then be able to ask, answer questions as well. Amy, you can take it away.
Hello, so there weren't many changes. Last year, when there was changes to a lot of things, we just put little notes along as far as no visitors in the building and those kind of things. We took all of those out. And then we updated dates and names. We replaced Katie Prevost in for the new special education director. And then we updated the dates of MCAS testing and the assessment windows and all of those things, meet the teacher night and so forth. Other than that, the policies haven't really changed on your end, so they're the same in our handbook now.
Any questions?
I have a question.
What?
So as I was going through the, all the handbooks, I noticed that the elementary handbook is the only one that lists the school committee members and our phone numbers. So I was wondering why and also sort of thought it would be more helpful if we want to include that, which I'm not sure we do, to have our email addresses, our Gloucester Schools email address.
To be honest, when I came here, they were always in there, so we kept them. If you'd like them out, we can take them out, and I'm not sure about the middle and high school.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't notice it at the middle and high school, no. So it's, I just didn't understand the.
I think it's probably one of these legacy things, you know, these documents that are, you know, and I think, I mean, it's up to the committee here, how you want to, you're self-listed and an email at this point may be more appropriate, but that's, that's your decision.
So. What?
Oh, I was just going to say, it should be consistent, is my opinion, I don't know. I think we want to let, you know, just elementary parents know who we are and not let the middle school and high school parents.
Right, so I don't, I don't know how we want to handle that, whether we want to remove it or add it, but it just feels like it should be consistent.
I mean, I think it's appropriate for us to be listed, but email addresses just seems more accessible than phone numbers.
Yeah.
At this point.
Oh, in case someone doesn't want to email, put it in writing.
I mean, our phone numbers are listed upon the website. I mean, it's not like they're secret, you know, so.
Well, so, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to replace our phone numbers with our Gloucester Schools email addresses.
And also to put it, to add it to the other.
Add it to the.
And to add it to the middle and high school handbooks as well.
I second that motion.
Is there any discussion?
Is there a reason why we shouldn't have our phone numbers there, you both?
Well, I know, for instance, I know there's one already that's wrong. Like, I mean, you have to keep up with, like, those you have to keep up with, whereas our Gloucester Schools email addresses are consistent.
I don't, I think the email is an appropriate way of getting in touch with us. Any further discussion? Maria, can we have a roll call vote?
Mayor Taken.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Chairman Hope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Carries unanimously. We'll go back to them.
Crystal Biddy, right there?
Wait, we didn't move the elementary one yet.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
So I just had a question on it as well.
Okay.
And not necessarily a question, Amy, but just for consistency, I think on the second part of it or on the page, I don't have it up in front of me and I'm sorry, I just can't do that right now. The page that has the fisherman statue on it, I don't know if it has the correct year. There was a couple year issues throughout all three handbooks that we're looking at tonight that may not say the correct school year. I think it still says last year. So I would just be cognizant of that and just go through it and make sure that the dates are updated before we approve it, before you print it or send it off.
So the fisherman is where it breaks to the second part and shows the actual policies. I will update that, absolutely.
Yeah, I think it's just on that page alone, it says the wrong year, if I remember correctly.
I'll double check.
Anything else? Do we have a motion to approve the elementary school handbook?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Maria, roll call vote.
Mayor Taken.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Chairman Hope.
Yes.
And Ms. Prince.
Yes.
And it's going to be as amended.
As amended.
It'll be amended by the end of the night.
Carries unanimously.
Thank you. Lib, Crystal Biddy, go ahead.
Alrighty. We have a couple of changes to make some corrections and updates and provide a little more readability in a couple of sections. So the first, on the cover page, we've added more Donahue, our new curriculum and instruction coordinator. And thank you so very much for adding that to the budget because she's already made a lot of contributions for us. The next section on page eight, the O'Malley sales description. We did quite a bit of work with sales last year through the lens of determining our core values for the school. We landed back at sales and expanded them into academics as well as the citizenship. So you can see a couple of things here, the first section is rewritten to explain some of the work that we've done. And it also talks about the fact that the students will this fall and potentially annually write a sales pledge based on both academic success and citizenship. And we want their voice involved on a more regular basis because the pledge that they wrote years ago is, you know, a little disconnected for them. On page 10, we have a change in our process for homework calendar and assignment notebooks. We are no longer distributing hard copy assignment notebooks. All the teachers have everything in Google Classroom, so the section that's amended reflects that. Some students may prefer to use assignment notebooks, but we publish everything through our Google Classrooms. Under the topic on page 10, specific guidelines for academics, the language was reframed in a more positive perspective with leading expectations as opposed to, you know, those who do not, those who fail. The language has changed to what they're expected to do and if they're unable to do it, what they can do. The content and the expectations are the same. It's just a change in language to put it in a positive light. The absence policies on page 12 and 13, we realize we're working with attendance works and all of the policies are going to be reviewed. So the changes here for this year are simply for readability and organizing information. We updated the excerpt from the policy JE because college visits don't apply at middle school. And it streamlined that a little bit with regard to the medical appointments relating to prolonged illness, surgery, and hospitalization or chronic medical condition. The second section is examples of excused absences. I found very confusing and have often had questions from parents about it. So that's been changed to a section that simply, in addition to the excused absences listed in the school committee policy, we now have two simple sections, one for unexcused absences and one for partial days to try to clarify what disqualifies a student for attending after-school activities and things like that. Under the Student Behavior Standard, we have an addition. From Esser Funding, we have added a PACE program, Positive Alternatives and Consequences Education, similar to the high schools program. So there is a paragraph added in there explaining that program and that it would be an alternative for an in-school suspension and for in-school detention as needed. Last but not least, our breakfast and lunch procedures cited ordering ahead and free and reduced lunch and paying for all of that. So for this year, we've amended it to note that breakfast and lunch don't need to be ordered ahead and that they're free for the school year. And that's everything.
Thank you. Any questions? Melissa?
Thank you, so, and I'm looking at yours, so if you could go back to page, I think it's 18?
18.
Oh, wait, maybe 19.
Okay.
After page. So, I have two questions. First, this handbook states that students are required to wear masks and we haven't taken that vote yet. So I don't know when this, when this handbook's being distributed, but I would just ask that you hold off until that decision is made to make it consistent.
Yep.
And then I have a concern with the punishment for failure to wear a mask, that it's considered a major infraction and would want this committee to consider that it be a lesser infraction for the first violation if we do have a mask mandate. And I say.
Go ahead, sorry.
I say this because after sitting on Essex Tech School Committee for nine years, I know how discipline records follow a student and I just wouldn't want to see a major infraction of this type of behavior to prevent someone further in their education in the vocational programs at that school if they chose to go there. Because that could make a break in admittance to that school. So I just think major at this time is a little excessive for violation, especially when we haven't voted on the policy yet. And I'm not saying we're not going to get there and it will be in the policy, but I just think it's premature tonight to vote this until we've had a bigger conversation.
Makes sense. I actually didn't touch the language in this section at all. This is all language that was approved last year. And I left it for that very reason, but I can take, I certainly will take the masks out for now for the vote and, you know, I'm, last year heading in, I think we all felt that it was going to be a major. You know, so that can certainly be changed to a minor as well.
And just know that I'm not, and I mean, I believe we're going to get there at some point where the mask language will need to be in the policy. But the disciplinary action, I didn't realize that last year when it was approved. I don't recall even discussing that, but I would want to have a discussion with this committee if that type of violation is appropriate for the consequence if we do get to that type of mandate for an O'Malley age student.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the middle school handbook with the caveat that the policies regarding face coverings will be put on hold until we take action next week?
Second.
And does that include the punishment for the?
When we take the, when we take up, we did take it up last year in regard to younger children. We had a long discussion about what the violation would be for small children, but I don't think, or recall paying up to middle school students, but we can do that when we, when we make policy. Okay? Alright. Any further, oh, we need a motion. We had a motion, a second, excuse me. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, do we have a roll call vote for the approval of the middle school handbook?
Mayor Taken.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Chairman Hope.
Yes.
And Ms. Prince.
It carries unanimously. And we will move on to the high school.
Yes, thank you, everybody, for having us here. It's nice, it's nice to be in person in the school here. It's good to be here. So the high school, you, as you've heard about, you know, so we went through and made the updates and some personnel, some dates, numbers, those sorts of things that may have changed, just the sort of updates. In our handbook, we did add some language about face coverings and other aspects of the COVID policy to refer to the school committee's policies, whatever they would be. So not knowing what they would be, just writing those in. So there's a sort of the general thing. We can then, if this will exist online, add the file number, you know, file when appropriate, you know, whenever, whenever the school committee comes up with at that time. And we'll also be adding, as talked about earlier, the emails of the school committee, as mentioned earlier. Other aspects of this updated handbook include, so progress reports. We had some success last year following O'Malley and we have some language in here about progress reports being sent home at the halfway point in each term. We really want to encourage families and students themselves to be accessing school reins, you know, the live grading that is done throughout the term and, you know, contacting teachers directly about that. We will, however, continue to remind families to check at the halfway point. So so instead of getting the the progress report with comments on it, we'll be sending the link, we'll be sending the directions for getting on again in case, you know, it's something that a person hasn't done, if they need support getting on or if they just need help, I often, if they can't do that through their devices, I'll send it to them directly. The report, and that was very successful. Then what teachers do. And we had success with this last year. Teachers will email at that same point, students are in danger of failing. My families are in danger of failing. We really focus the, you know, more nuanced communication on on these students who are in trouble in some way. So again, it's in in some ways by not having the traditional progress report, able actually able to do more and more that's targeted the student. So the new language simply updates that. And then we had some success with that last year. And so that's one. There are only four. Another change is we it's a small, small adjustment in our policies about, you know, making sure phones are away and and not disruptive to allow students, instead of having phones taken from them, to put them away in a backpack or bag, not on their person. That thing can come out much too easily. And I get into, I see very crafty stuff there, but a bag and it's away. But we do find in a, you know, trauma sensitive environment that taking a phone away from a kid is a real flashpoint for crises. And we did some reading on that and this policy will will make sure that kids, you know, don't have them, they're not accessible. You know, sometimes students want us to have it at a secure location and they'll still, that'll still be an option in classrooms. But we won't, we don't want to create that flashpoint. So it goes away and the student continues to to not comply and that's where the assistant principal intervenes and helps helps with that situation. So it's a small change. I think it was changeable word or two, but that's the reason for the change. Two years ago, we came before you and changed the time required for student athletes and other extracurricular participants to be in school. We changed it from seven thirty to seven forty-five. And and looking at, we looked at policies around the North Shore to make that change in communicating with the assistant principal, site-based committee and Brian LaFata, the A D, we want to move it back to seven thirty. And getting really focusing on making sure they're here on time every day, especially where attendance is one of our big root goals to improve attendance overall. We think we can, we think we can do it. Again, the policy includes things happen that are beyond the kid's control. We're still able to intervene and allow a student to participate by vetting that whatever happens that particular day, but we want to get it back to seven thirty. Students were maybe using that cushion a little bit, right, to come in at seven forty-two and and so on, when really we we think they could have been here at seven thirty. So that's the other change. And then the final change is based on feedback from our site-based council. Again, that's parents and students as well as faculty. Classroom observations and also our legal counsel. This is a change to our, the hat part of our of our dress code policy so that we can really focus on safety, which is really the leg we have to stand on when it comes to that policy. And so we want to make sure that we can see student faces in hallways, no obscuring brims, visors and clothes and hallways. But no longer dictating no hats in the classroom where kids can be identified by their teachers. So that's the change we wish to make there and bringing it in line with the guidance that we did get a couple of years ago from legal counsel, spent a year talking about it in site-based counsel. And this will create clarity for students on, you know, really in the hallways where we have to see those faces because, you know, teachers don't necessarily know that all the students, it's harder to identify students at that time than it is in classrooms. So those are four changes that we planned, as well as the updates of dates and that sort of.
Listen.
I'm reading through it. I didn't see any changes to suggest other than I think it's on page eighty-one and I don't know if it's eighty-one of the packet or eighty-one of the of the document, but Ryan Marshall's name is still listed as the John Person, so I would just.
I think we updated that page very early in the summer, so thank you for that. Yeah.
And then there's the couple of dates, the same thing as the school year dates. Make sure those are consistent.
We did a the the search for the dates. It would be helpful if anyone.
I think one of them again is that page with the fisherman statue on it, which is the second part. That could be why I can't remember.
Yeah, we don't have a similar, we don't have that similar page like that.
Okay, so there was somewhere, maybe it was.
I can do another, I'll do another search and we'll have the secretaries do a another twenty twenty twenty. Basically what we do is we look for every mention of twenty twenty. Every mention of, you know, twenty twenty-one and and and, you know, make sure it's a twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two situation. But we can do that again. And the other one, Ryan, thank you.
Thank you, James.
Lauren.
So, yeah, Ryan, so I had two questions. Number one was on page twenty-four. I just I think this is also something that's been in there for a long time, but I stood out to me. It's the disclosure of contact information to military recruiters, institutions of higher education and prospective employers. In accordance with federal law, Gloucester High School will release the names, addresses and telephone numbers of its students to U.S. Military Recruiters Colleges, Universities and other post-secondary educational institutions, et cetera, et cetera. So parents have to opt out of that. They're automatically opted into that.
That's right. Yeah, that's common practice.
Right. So I just wanted to sort of say that.
Say that publicly.
To let parents know that if you want to not be part of that, you have to write to, you have to write to the school and let them know. So I just want to raise that.
And we have a secretary who does take care of that, responds and vets those lists, you know, against anybody who has opted out.
Right. That's great. And then secondly, and I think this may be just waiting for our decisions, but I noticed on pages twenty-five and twenty-six, you have COVID symptom monitoring. Sort of said, please monitor for these symptoms, but there was no what to do if you see those.
Exactly, because we removed the, we, that's exactly one of the examples given earlier. Yeah, not only the masks, but but we don't, we didn't know yet what to do. In fact, I just, you know, the the symptoms themselves are somewhat, I didn't change, I didn't remove them, but they're slightly different as well.
Right, right.
So that whole section there in the document we keep is highlighted, similar to what Lynn, how Lynn had hers. So what would you all come up with and using the new language that we have from Bessie that will go into that spot? No, thank you for that. It's a really good example of.
Right. Illness, you know, just in general, obviously. Okay, those are mine.
Any any other questions?
I'll make the motion that we approve the GHS high school handbook as amended and discussed.
Discussion. Kathy.
James, I like your changes to the, you know, hats as well as the time to arrive to school because I always thought it was a little lenient.
Experiment, other school, we were one of the strictest schools even with the seven forty-five. We were trying to get more in line with some other folks, but we realized we, no, we wanted to go back to where we were. Because one other school at our conference that's as adamant about it, but again, it's something that, yeah, that's really important.
People want them in good habits.
Yep, exactly.
And if that's the way they can place forth the habits.
And Brian was on board. It just, I want to say that publicly, right? A Ds, coaches, everybody at stake, they're all for getting the kids here on time to learn.
Any further discussion? Reid, River, roll call vote.
May I take it?
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
And this prints.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. So just to be clear, these, you don't actually print these, do you? Or just?
We will have printed copies.
Right.
So I I I might get into a long story about our hand, physical printed copy of the handbook, but everything in COVID being delayed and so on. There was no way that we could, of course, get it into our kids' hands in a normal way. So what we decided is we we are going to have both, you know, we what we used to print it in would be where students write their assignments. We want to pay, we're we're looking for a paper and electronic version of that, whatever works best for the kids. So we're going forward with them having something physical, but it won't have the handbook in it. Instead, it will be online. It will be accessible through their Google Classrooms for students on front and center on our webpage as a school. And then also we'll have printed copies available when parents come in for various reasons, if, you know, they have difficulty with 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 online. Kathy Heard in the assistant principal's office will have copies that she'll be able to be picking for.
All right. Anything else on handbooks before we move on? Thank you very much and having, it's good to be getting started.
Very good to be getting started.
So in a normal-ish way.
Well, it'll be new way anyway. It'll be a new way. About that right now. All right. So ready to move on?
Yes.
I'm going to self-convince. So I'm gonna share my screen. I'm gonna start with this over you and then we'll hand it over here from our guests from the Board of Health and Department of Health. And so let me just share my screen here, folks. So one thing we learned last year most definitely was that every day matters. Every day that our kids are in school is a good day for them, good day for our staff, and also a good day for our community. So we're going this year to try to do our very best to have a regular or normal, perhaps, a regular school day, school week and school year every day of the year. In terms of tonight, we already gave the school handbook approval. I mentioned I'll have an update. Here's a little opening. We'll hear an update from Mr. Rosa, Mr. Schenk. And then I'll go through my recommendations to the school committee on a multi-later approach and all the steps from here. So our primary objective this year is a little bit different last year because last year we weren't sure if we'd have all kids in school and we had to set up some very, very good remote learning options. This year, our goal is to safely educate all of our students in our schools every day to maximize learning, address our students' full needs and support community and family needs as well. Again, what we've learned through COVID, there's a lot of things. One of them is that our schools operating normally is really helps our community function well. And so we are, that is one of the many areas that, one of the many reasons I should say that we need our schools open with our regular school days, school weeks, school years. So we have, just like last year, we had some guiding beliefs on our on our planning as we as we moved towards school opening. As I've already mentioned, every day matters, of course. We are always trying to, we believe that our academic, that our students' academic, social, emotional, mental health needs are best supported when they are in our schools with our teachers and staff. We will continue to operate by making decisions based on facts, science and data, specifically local ones. So what's the situation in Gloucester? What's the situation in our surrounding communities? And what's the situation in Massachusetts? I said Zalat a lot, a lot a year ago. We understand things are different in Texas and Florida and other places. What matters most is what's happening closest to us, especially in Gloucester. And that's changed, obviously. So we'll talk more about that tonight. The health and safety and education of Gloucester's children and also our health and safety of our families and staff remains our top priority. Without that, no one can learn and no one can teach and educate and support. And then also the, something we really made very clear last year and everyone supported was the notion that while we're trying to minimize risk and ensure safety of our students and our staff, we weigh that risk along many factors, okay? What's the risk for them being in school versus what's their risk of being outside of school? And we know that outside of school, or when kids are not in school, it has a significant impact and and you may say enduring impact on their learning, on their social, emotional health, on their mental health, on the health of the families and also well-being, laid to food, employment and access to such services. So those are the many sort of pieces about why we are, you know, how, you know, what's guiding our work as we continue work with open schools. Some of those are changed some, but most of those are consistent with last year. A few things about lessons that we learned from a very successful school year and I felt like a pretty significant cheerleader last year for our schools and our community and I still feel that way. But what we did last year was remarkable and we never should forget that. And we're going to need to lean on a lot of that work this year as well. Because as we know, things are changing quite a bit and they're changing rapidly. So one lesson we learned is we can do this and we can do this together. But it takes all of us working well together and supporting each other to do it and do it like we did last year and how we hope we will this year. Keeping Gloucester's kids in school, as I mentioned already, helps our entire Q A every single day. Last year, even in a very difficult year, with more restrictions than we'll have this year, our students had a very, very good year. It wasn't perfect and students' staff faced many challenges, but our students learned, they got some support they needed. They were connected to their peers and their educators and and what I think was a perhaps the most difficult year of all, we we together produced a fantastic year for our students. One thing we learned, and I hope we'll always remember this, is when people are sick or not feeling well, they should stay home. And that makes the whole school healthier and hopefully healthier. Whether that's flu, noroviruses, chickenpox, or of course COVID. If you're sick or coughing or have symptoms, please, whether your staff or students or families, please stay home and get help. You need to come back to school. Need to remember that. Especially this year. Another thing, which I'm just going to be blunt about, but but I do want to be open about it is Gloucester held together last year. We supported each other. We gave each other grace and we look out for each other. Other community students. And I'm hoping and I'm urging all of us to do the same this year, okay? We are tired. We are tired of this. And 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 COVID and all the pieces, but we held there last year and I really want all of us in this room to do our best and everyone out there listening to do their best about keeping us together. Many communities suffered significant damage, I think, to the health of their community better because of what happened last year and the way folks tore each other. For good reason, with a lot of, you know, concern, anxiety, and I understand that, but Gloucester was head and shoulders above many folks, many communities. And I hope, I urge, I will lead in a way that I that tries to have us all do that together, but you know, you have to do it all together. And then the other thing is, I think we learned last year is we can and we will make good decisions and we'll adjust as we need to along the way. And we have a great team, great leaders and great community, tremendous families, fantastic students who did such a great job last year. We will do a good job this year. I'm confident of that and we'll adjust as we need to. And there will be adjustments, most likely. We don't know what those are, you know, where it's going to go exactly, but I'm confident in this group and the whole entire community of, we can adjust and do well. So. And then there are a bunch of things that are different this year. And and Max and Joe will tell us in a moment, a few things are different from their end. But we do know that vaccinations are a game changer. I will, again and again, and I and I urge everyone to support me on this and support those community. Vaccinations are essential for our communities, for our community's health, okay? And I understand there's a range of opinions on this. But there is there the science, the health, the experience folks are having day in and day out that vaccination is helping. The more folks we have in our community who are vaccinated, the better. You know, Caesar recommendation, recommendation from me on tonight, based in that. Very important change from the Department of Education is that Massachusetts will not allow remote learning to count as a school day or learning time. And we had that option last year, did a great job with it. We don't have that option this year. Okay, so we are doing everything we can to have a, we have to have regular school days with all kids in for full days and we'll do that. Delta variant is a is a real big change. One second. Is a real big change. And it's a change that's happening as we speak, essentially. And is and is, we do know it's more contagious than other variants have been. But it is also developing and that's one of the things that we're going to have to keep an eye on closely, all of us. And will probably, may, I should actually say may, cause changes as we go. Another thing that we've learned is that COVID is an airborne virus and there's little little evidence to date that it's transmitted through contact surfaces, okay? That may change how we do some things in our schools, okay? But that is pretty clear. And we also like clean schools, clean schools, so we'll be working on that. A few more things here. Testing is much more readily available and will happen the entire year. I'll go into more details about that tonight. Distancing distancing is not as necessary and not as strict as before. There are no requirements in the state on that, but we'll do our best in every single way we can. The corn gene protocols are more complex and more complicated. I'll touch on that some today, but that's going to be a challenge for us, but we can do it well. And then lastly, as I said before, we are all tired of this. We are all very tired of this. I am tired of this. I know families are home and our teachers are sat and all of you are tired of this. And as I said to our principals and rich people today, we do need to, and I hope folks have got some rest, take a deep breath, take some time and then commit ourselves to making sure our students and our staff and our families are safe. And we're going to talk about tonight about some things we can do to make sure that happens. But I want to acknowledge that none of this is fun, none of this is anything we really want to do, but for our students, for our students and our community, we need to make sure some things stay in place and and also some changes as well. So. So I'm sure if you wanted to.
I wait. I didn't realize that we're going to get into the conversation.
We're getting all the hour, don't you worry.
So I'll hold on until we discuss.
One more, one more slide of this, because I want, I also, one more slide and we'll get to the Health Department and their updates for the community. One more, one more slide of this, because I want, I also, one more slide and we'll get to the Health Department and their updates for the community. I wanna make a clear vision for what we're trying to do. And we are trying to have a regular school day, regular school week, regular school year. That's gonna take a layered approach. What I mean by regular school days is what's on this slide, and much, much more. Full in-person school days for all students pre-K through 12. And we'll be learning in groups, enhanced activities, and regular-sized classes. And folks will be next to each other, and they'll be learning from each other and listening to each other. We'll have in-person specialized support, instruction for students who need that, okay? We'll have after-school activities. We'll have athletics at O'Malley and GHS. We'll have performing arts and music and instruments in clubs, okay? We'll have hot lunches and breakfasts in, in school. We'll have a variety of offerings. And meals this year, the federal government has extended meals that, so meals are free for all students, okay? That is new and different. I mean, it was the same way last year, but in terms of a regular school year having that, that is new and different. So, meals are free for all students, and will be for the whole year.
And then they weren't hot lunches.
And they weren't, no, they weren't, no, they were not the hot lunches. The meals being free is, is same as last year. The hot lunch is very different.
Better options.
Yeah, yeah, better options, yep, absolutely. And if you have a question about that, Mark and Joe is on the line tonight. Kids will have social connections, mental health support, they'll have access to related services and agencies, and there will be outdoor recess and outdoor activities. So, that's what we're aiming for. In order to do that, every day, every week, every, the whole year, we do have to make some alterations, okay? And everyone's gonna be happy about what I recommend, but it'll help us stay in school and have this type of school experience for all of our kids every day. Let me stop there and welcome Joseph Rosa, who's the incoming chair of the Board of Health. Max Schenk, who's the acting director of the Gloucester Department of Health. We've had a great partnership with Department of Health since I joined here on July 6th last year, and already starting, continuing that with Max and work with Joe as well. Thank you for being here, and please give us an update from your point of view about how the community's doing and what we need to do to keep our kids safe.
Well, thanks, Ben, and I want to thank everybody for the opportunity to be here this evening. So, I guess, you know, tough act to follow, but what we'll do is we'll be the numbers people and try to give some interpretation what those numbers actually mean for Gloucester as a community. So, I mean, by and large, it's actually good news to tell, and we're happy to be able to say that, but it doesn't mean that we can stop being vigilant. And our own message when it comes to masking appropriately and getting vaccinations, that's a top priority. So, looking at the numbers up to date, as of August 15th, we have 22 active cases in the community, and one hospitalization from that number. That number actually made, that 22, we have popped up a couple just recently. Of those 22, there are eight new cases, and I'm gonna break that down a little bit further. So, the eight new cases, two were fully vaccinated, one was had one dose, three were not vaccinated, and two, the status was unknown at the time of reporting. Now, when we talk about those numbers, you have to keep in mind that when they're tabbed, that people come on to the list as an active case, and then people come off the list based on timeframe. So, it's an ebb and flow, but in general, it's been about 24, 22, in the twenties, lower twenties, middle of twenties. By comparison, in July 24th, we had just greater than 10. So, there is a little bit of a bump up, as you can see, over time. In terms of age groups, for the eight that we were just discussing who were new cases, between the ages of 11 and 20, that's one, between the ages of 21 and 30, there are two, between the ages of 31 and 40, that's two people, between 41 and 50, it's one person, and between 51 and 60, it's two. Now, the other thing to keep in mind is also is that that's a little bit misleading to a certain extent in this most recent number, because we saw a bump up of people who were vaccinated and also coming in as positive. Now, that could sound like, well, what the heck, you know, why is this something happening? What was the vaccine for in the first place? Well, it's a good reminder that because there's a higher vaccination rate in this area, people, and because the Delta variant, which I'm gonna count on, you know, as a scientist, it explained the difference between the Alpha and the Delta variants, and why this one's a little bit more virulent. But because the Delta variant is more virulent and is more, people are just as susceptible to getting it, what the vaccine does is save lives. To my knowledge, and Joe can catch me on this, nobody who's been vaccinated has died from the Delta variant. So, it's an important thing to recognize. The other thing is too, those who are vaccinated suffer the least repercussions from getting the, the Delta variant. So, please keep that in mind when you hear stories and rumors and stuff like that, and people ask those questions. The other good news is to report that the vaccination rate for the community as a whole for a first dose, at least at least one dose of vaccine, is 75% in Gloucester, and it's 70% in the state. So, we're actually edging out the state as a whole of that number. And for this body, probably a number that's most important to you, is the vaccination rate for its youth ages 12 to 19 is 66%, where in the state it's 65%. So, I think there's a lot to be thankful for, but there's still a lot of work to do. When we talk about positivity rates, the place, I'm just looking at the state's positivity rate. So, for those people who get tested, how, what's the positivity rate of those test numbers? It's 2.5% in Gloucester. When you look at the state overall, the most recent numbers that I was able to find, 2.69 for the state. So, again, we're kind of leading the way in the, so, in our positivity rate, there were approximately 1,321 people vaccinated. And I apologize, I can't differentiate between PCR tests and rapid tests and that sort of thing, but which comes to about, so the 2.5% is about 33-ish people. And overall, for the community, when you talk about 75% of the people at least receiving one vaccine, that means that we have the challenge of about 7,000 plus, thereabouts, people who still need to be vaccinated. So, drilling that message home, you may have received the smart 911 call that went out, and my thanks to the administration and their support for helping us guide that message through to the community. And the two takeaways that the board recommended was for people to stay vigilant and practice, just practice smart distancing, smart masking, and also to get vaccinated. And just since I have a forum, if people are looking for how, where they can get their vaccine, you can also, you know, obviously call a tag your primary care physician. They're not able to provide it just yet until the vaccine is fully approved. However, you can go to vaxfinder.mask.gov and type in your zip code, and it'll give you all the locations nearby where you can receive the vaccine. I think what I'll do at this point, unless you wanna hold off a little bit later for a Q and A, I'll turn over to Joe, and Joe can probably give a little bit more background of the Delta variant.
Yeah, first of all, let me, let me congratulate the superintendent. Everything you said is as though you were sitting in on the Board of Health meetings.
I wasn't, I wanted to do it.
You know, we, we have done well. Gloucester comparatively has done very well compared to many other surrounding communities. That's in part a tribute to just our Gloucester, people take care of each other. But nonetheless, and so I made this prompt that, I don't know whether, would any of the people in the committees have seen the wastewater data?
No, that's one of the questions I know.
Do try some eye on it.
I do keep an eye on it.
Anyway, and so unfortunately, I didn't make this for this meeting. But this is a plot of time from last August to roughly today of the amount of virus in our sewage. And you can see back last December and early of, of this year, there were a bunch of spikes. So, we can say you can count maybe four or five. And then it went down to essentially zero for months, and we thought, yay. But you can see now, this is the last few, it's ticking up again. That's undoubted, we don't know for a fact, but it's just almost certainly the Delta variant.
Can I attempt to just show that to the platform?
Sure, sure. If you can manage that. It's almost certainly the Delta variant. And that's significant, because it's much more transmissible, as I'm sure all of you have heard, it's much more transmissible. And therefore, masking, if we're hoping to stop it in its tracks and get it back down to zero, masking is even more important now than it was. It also seems to, for, for some people, it seems to be more dangerous. But the danger should not be measured in terms of number of cases. The danger should be measured by hospitalizations and deaths. And there, what you, you heard Max, there's only one in the city. Has that been the case for some time now? Is that, there were no mayor ever? Yeah, okay.
With hospitalization. With hospitalization.
Yeah. And so, that's, that's very good. But nonetheless, now is the time to continue our vigilance and make sure that it doesn't tick up and up and up as it, as it could do. So, that's why I think we are, the board and, and the department are, are happy with the recommendations that DESI and the DPH have made regarding schools. And so, they're not easily transmissible to our situation here. For instance, calling for K through six, masking because they're not vaccinated yet. Well, what do you, what do we do about O'Malley? It's, I don't know. That's for you to decide. And because that's, that becomes a more complex issue. But I do believe that if we're, if we're vigilant about masking indoors, of course, outdoors is, is, people have found, the science has progressed, that outdoors by and large are pretty safe, as long as people are not silly. Outdoors seems to be pretty safe, and masking is less, less important than. Because certainly indoors, among people of unknown status, as in a school, masking is, is, is important, especially, of course, if you're not vaccinated. Max, I don't know whether you wanna elaborate on the details.
Well, I mean, it's, you know, the board and the departments are, you know, touting the lines of the Centers for Disease Control and the Department of Public Health. And I know it's, does get a little vague when it comes to the latest recommendations for schools from DESI, but the department and the board remain steadfast in their messaging that masking indoors, regardless of vaccination status, is important. Even more important is being vaccinated. So, you know, what we're hopeful is that the FDA will get full approval to the COVID vaccine sometime in the next month, especially now that they're recommending a third dose. It'll be important for those people who need to receive that third dose to be able to go to their primary care physicians to get it, or else it's gonna be a real burden on local public health and other organizations to try and backfill that, that need. And when it comes to emergency, possible emergency approval of the vaccine for children of the ages five to 11, when the mayor was kind enough to allow me to sit in on a Zoom meeting with other mayors, where they have a epidemiologist and a representative from one of the hospitals, organizations in the room.
And I'm not going in person.
So, their crystal ball was hoping that sometime in December timeframe, hopefully that FDA might provide an emergency approval for that age group. So, we're keeping our fingers crossed. But we're just gonna keep barking and whistling the same tune. Wear masks indoors if you are in a public space. Obviously, if you're at home with a family or vaccinated, that's one thing. And get vaccinated. Vaccination, vaccination is the best thing you can do. So, that's it.
Any questions?
More?
I have a few. So, thank you, folks. I mean, it's very, very helpful to have you here, sort of giving, you know, the good news about how we're doing. So, first on the wastewater testing. Just a clarification, are we, is our wastewater testing attached to like sort of the grid or like, no, there's a northern grid, a southern grid from Massachusetts, the MWRA? Are ours attached to?
We're not in that system.
Okay.
That's the Quavon RIS for, that provides Boston.
Gotcha. So, are we gonna continue doing the wastewater testing? Is that gonna be our sort of early warning system going forward?
Well, the, Joe can provide his inputs as well, but currently, we're working with the administration because we had stopped, well, we didn't stop, but essentially, the money that we had to pay Biobank for the testing and around the end of the fiscal year. However, we were fortunate in the fact that Biobank let us participate in a study that was being done by the Health and Human Services, by the Department of Health and Human Services to extend COVID testing to different communities using a slightly different protocol to check for Delta variant. And this is where I'm gonna rely on Joe somewhat. When it comes to the test results and how they're measured before, when we received the results, and they were looking mostly at the, before the Delta variant became the, the primary form of the virus, the Alpha variant would allowed you, as it were, to, allow them to be able to do estimates on possible case, number of cases in your community. So, it was a good measuring point for us to say, okay, the numbers are going up, and the numbers are going down, and going from there. Now, because of the way that the Delta variant acts, and it's shedding a virus early on, or people shedding virus early on, even though it's a huge spike, will get very sick. And it's, the virus sheds significantly thereafter. It's harder to detect that, and you can't really judge the numbers accurately, so that they are just giving us a general, you know, presence or absence, and then, you know, the amount of virus that they detect, or general.
Yeah, so, so in the past, they used to use the numbers that are plotted on the Y axis there and converted into the likely number of cases in your community. They were able to do that because someone had done an experiment in, in the stool of infected people and found out how much virus they had. And, you know, they did it to just one person, they averaged it out over a whole collection of people. And therefore, they ended up with a, a number that they could divide the big number into or, or by. And, and they, nobody's done that experiment with the Delta variant. But in a sense, it doesn't really matter, because what matters is that plot. If the plot is going up, that's bad news.
So, with this, this plot, as you pointed out, I'll put it here, it was a little up.
Yeah.
So, it's four to 10 days out that we then see the cases, is that right?
Yeah, roughly. Well, actually, we don't even know that for sure for the Delta variant, but.
So, are we, have we seen these yet?
Probably, because those, I can't remember exactly what dates those were, but I think the, the last one was August.
Yeah, I think it was just the 18th or.
Yeah, there it was. That would be today. It was probably a week ago.
Yeah.
So, those cases are probably in our 20s.
Yes, correct, that's correct.
So, that's where we are, okay. Great, so, that's, because it was great, it was great to know we had this early warning system last year.
We're gonna continue to do that.
So, that's great. You mentioned that you're encouraging, the Board of Health is encouraging masking indoors no matter what your status is. But we don't have, I mean, that Gloucester's not doing that.
Right.
So, you're.
But we can encourage that. Something for all of you to think about, and it's not necessarily a recommendation of the board, but it's requiring masking, as I'm sure you're all aware, is a two-edged sword. It, it's, from a health perspective, it's, definitely should be done. However, it has other ramifications. Certainly outside of schools, restaurants certainly don't like it, or businesses don't like it in general, because it hurts their business. I would, I think for schools, it would be worth trying, but I've put this out only as a suggestion, worth trying in high school, for instance, or the middle school, to allow vaccinated students not to mask with the hopes of encouraging those that aren't vaccinated to get vaccinated. I, I, I don't know whether that would work, but I see it. I I I don't know whether that would work, but I see it perhaps as less punitive than making everyone wear a mask to start with. I I don't, I don't know. I, you, you guys are the experts when it comes to persuasion in schools.
Just one last quick question. You said outside is letting much safer than inside. Kids, kids, we know, you know, play in each other's faces.
Sure.
I wondered about that. I mean, assuming that's pretty safe, just, I mean, kids don't stay distanced when they're playing. And I, you know, I think that's great, but I'm just wondering what the science tells us about.
Well, you know, it's difficult to do definitive experiments that cover all instances. But I think the evidence is pretty strong right now that being outdoors and having brief contacts with someone is much, much safer than being indoors for a prolonged period of time where air isn't well circulated.
I think the other thing to remember too is that time will tell. So we'll move forward and, you know, we'll keep an eye on the numbers and we'll keep an eye on the age groups of the numbers that we're seeing. And, you know, investigations into those cases will reveal the contacts that were involved, et cetera. And we'll be able to take a better pulse as to how that transmission happened and adjust accordingly.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think you're all aware that Salem, for instance, has taken very strict, put in place very strict mandates for the entire community. But we're not Salem. We're not having a wild Halloween party. Much of which happens indoors. And so, I don't know if you've ever tried to be there on Halloween. Don't do it. But a lot of it happens in bars and witch houses and God knows what. And so it's not all outdoors and it's a lot of people. Even if you are outdoors, you're a cheap by jowls of people. We're not doing that, hopefully.
And my understanding is that. My understanding too is that the Salem School Committee is required masking indoor, well, excuse me, the Salem Board of Health required masking for all indoor public spaces. However, when it came to schools, there was no outdoor mandate. So if there, I like, I want to hear our recommendations here and perhaps have a chance to discuss them. Any questions for?
I want to ask more questions, so before we get to recommendations, if possible, I don't know how they feel. I usually want to answer some questions, but I can't get very into it, so I don't want to jump in front of her.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. So from the cases so far with contact tracing, I think last year we kind of at least knew, you know, there were positive cases in school. Were there any, could we infer anything or did we learn anything? So given that the case, has there been enough time with the current cases to understand a little bit about how, when, you know, any, anything to say what situations have maybe?
In terms, it's generally been exposure from people who were not vaccinated. If I had to put it in on something. It can be amongst, you know, family members, that sort of thing. But I don't, I don't want to speak out of turn for lack of information, but I try to get that answered for.
I mean, as as we go, as you say, we continue to learn more, so.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
First, I want to thank you both for being here and Jeff as well. I mean, one thing we learned last year, it's tough to make decisions not having an opportunity to question because we're not experts on health by any means. So we appreciate your input. And we also recognize that from one day to another, things change. So having that constant conversation and updates from the superintendent and from your department on the city side of how many cases there are and and the age groups and things like that is very important. I know there's a lot of people in the community that are upset that we're taking a long time to make any decisions. But like I just said, things change on a day-to-day basis. So it's tough to make a decision now when things are looking good for a month from now, when things could be bad. So that day-to-day last-minute decisions is become part of the norm, just to keep up with what's going on. So two things, so it's my understanding, Laura brought up the wastewater. So Essex is included in our wastewater testing?
Well.
Or no?
Well, by default they are because they're open to western app.
Right, so our statistics that we see tonight include the town of Essex as well as Gloucester.
Yeah, it does, but the majority of of the sewage is.
Is that what, yeah. No, I just want to know that it's not just Gloucester, there's another small.
And of course, it's not all of Gloucester.
Right, because of the septic system is, so, okay. And I'd like to get back to Joe's conversation, but I want some input from Jeff as well. So tonight, we're considering, we're hearing about recommendations from the superintendent about masks. This is going to be one of the, one of the conversations he has a recommendation on. So I'd like to hear from those who know more than I do on this, who have been reading nonstop for five days trying to pick yourself up to speed and read good articles versus articles that may not be correct. So if we do wear masks in the schools, but there's not a community mask mandate anywhere or any regulation, only recommendations everywhere else. And and this could be for any large group gathering, not just the school. So convince me or tell me how that if kids are protected part of the day, but not necessarily protected the rest of the day, what is the impact here? I mean, if if we're wearing masks in school, whether we're vaccinated or not, which I struggle with a little bit, but I'm learning. And we know that kids leave school and they they collaborate at a friend's student's house for the rest of the day and the masks on on. I mean, where, how do we navigate through those issues?
Well, it's obviously.
By saying being masked for six hours is okay, but the the other 18, you're not. How does that work for us? And I want to hear from Jeff on that too.
Okay, yeah, he's right. Reducing the the risk by half, for instance, just to make up a number. Which could be useful, of course. It's not perfect. So you have to weigh the the risk benefits, and the risk being that people get fed up and don't wear the mask at all. Don't bother to get vaccinated, et cetera, et cetera. Versus reducing the risk in half, by half, and that that might be enough. It's not ideal for sure. But where we are right now, I think it's difficult to convince, difficult to convince me. And I think it would be also difficult to convince the community that there ought to be a full-blown back-to-square-one lockdown, is the phrase used to be, right? Which, you know, that would be the safest thing to do, but good luck with doing it.
I would happily like to speak on that. So I'd like to lead up by saying we can control what happens within our walls while we are here. We have thousands of people that we have on a daily basis. That doesn't extend to out of our our schools, our walls. So if we can do anything to help the spread with people mingling here, I can speak to what happened last year. We had near, right around 200 cases. We can count the number of suspected in-school transmission on less than one hand. That's remarkable.
And there was no vaccinations?
Yeah.
So masks.
It works.
A huge pressure.
Yeah, yeah. So when the science continues to prevail and we have new findings, we have never deviated away from DESI's recommendations and their encouragement. So if it's not broken, why make significant adjustments right now? Because we had a heck of a year last year and it was very successful. And my recommendation is to lead off this year, at least starting until we have further science, to reflect that.
Thank you very much.
Samantha?
Thank you. Doesn't matter who answers this question, feel free to jump in. You know, we have a whole population 12 and under that's not vaccinated.
Correct.
So to me, what makes the most sense, right, is as a community that we continue to look out for the people who don't have a choice to get vaccinated right now, right? There's still a significant risk to some people who don't have that choice. So in relation to Delta, what's the risk to kids under 12 that we know of so far? You're hearing about it in different states that occur with low vaccination rates. In this state, what do you think the risk is for kids 12 and under?
In this state, in this area, as highlighted by the Department of Public Health, the numbers are fairly low. And I want to emphasize that we have a lot of people that have not been together in their circles that are coming into new circles. So when you have that blending, it's important to at least identify knowing that we have a significant factor of success with a mask until we know where we are. We will have new findings, we will be, Superintendent Lummis will be going over our plan to ensure the safety moving forward and get a better like pulse on our community. But until then, I really, we need to protect everyone. So and to say K through five, K through six, our district, we have 12-year-olds in the middle school, so they're not eligible. So would we do only elementary and only middle and let the high school go? Now we're into the vaccinated versus unvaccinated. How do we require people to do it without reaching their confidentiality HIPAA? So that's an important factor. So making recommendations, which I encourage people to get vaccinated and I don't oppose having everyone vaccinated in the building. That is how we are going to get our community, as we see in the numbers that we're leading the state. And if we continue to encourage and we see that the Biobot is showing very low numbers and our community rates are next to none, that's definitely room for discussion for making changes to the guidelines that Superintendent Lummis and myself have gone over to arrange. So just like last year, we will change things daily, weekly, monthly, and it will mirror what is happening in our community and surrounding communities.
Part of the reason why why we're seeing more young kids infected is because they're not vaccinated. So they're a bigger population that's susceptible. I don't think that they're more dangerously susceptible than they were, but there is, that is the susceptible pool.
Right, and so masking at the moment.
Masking will help, for sure.
Will help protect them.
Correct, for sure.
I can't speak to Gloucester necessarily, though. One of the statistics I didn't look up is that for cases for children 15 and under, and the two weeks prior to August 10, there were 1,310 infected cases in Massachusetts. So they're there, it's definitely.
So what I hear you saying is we're still really learning how this is going to impact our community. It's not here, hopefully, hopefully it doesn't happen, but if it, you know, we need to do whatever we can.
Yeah.
To be ready if that does happen.
And when we resume our weekly testing opportunities and our goal is to, I I don't want to get ahead into the slideshow here, but we we have plans to make the weekly testing more widespread, identify schools, grades, classrooms, anywhere that there, to create patterns. Once we have more information, I think we can make a better educated decision. Last year, we tested weekly at the high school and the middle school. This year, our goal is to roll it out to the elementary schools. Once we get a very good picture.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, what sort of testing has been done? Is it pool testing or?
Yeah, so let me just check with the committee here.
Yeah.
I I've got more food for thought, bro.
There's a couple more slides.
I was wondering if it's broken out, unless folks have any questions for.
I think, I'm happy to go.
Maybe it's time to go.
Okay, well. Melissa just went down and let Joel in, you know, so.
I'm happy to wait for a稍.
You might wait for the.
Absolutely. We're just, let me just wrap up and I'll I'll talk slowly on this last slide here, but Max, you're welcome to stay, at least for the next, I I would encourage you to stay for the next two pieces I'll I'll cover. And then, and of course, you're you're always free to go. It's a long ride to Newbury Forest.
I'd like to thank you both for for coming and.
No, I'm about to, yeah, thank you.
Very informed.
So what we will continue to do, we're working with the Department of Health staff and the Board of Health is we'll continue to monitor, like we last year, closely monitor community transmission, vaccination coverage, as we shared tonight, testing, work with them to make sure we get testing up and and also the state, make sure we do not testing, but also vaccinations clinics at O'Malley and at and at JHS, and we'll closely monitor changes in positive cases and also work together on contact tracing as well. And, you know, I I do, we do have, or the Department of Health has two contact tracers now. You don't have the whole team that they had in in the past, because it's not necessary right now. But we certainly will encourage them and and our and the administration to, if we, if the city needs to build that up, to build it up if necessary. Max and I have talked about that. So that that was that team from the Department of Health and also working constantly with our nurses and Jeff. Actually, it was your nurses. Yeah, right. But that, but that, that was a fantastic team, they're doing to save lives from last year. So if necessary, I hope the city will, you know, build that as robust as we can come forward, so. I didn't talk slowly enough.
So it's, so then it's just for my application, is is everything that you list there sort of ready to go or is there more to be done?
Yeah, there's, there's more to be done, Joe, don't worry about it, I'll I'll get into that. But let me just, I'll keep on going slowly here. But what's important for us and what I, we are working on and will will have up and running as soon as we possibly can, in order to have every school year, school day, every day, is we have a labor approach. It's something that a lot of folks are talking about because it's the right approach. First of all, as we talked about tonight, vaccination is number one and most important layer. And we'll do everything we can to help our families and help our staff get vaccinated. I'll talk more about that tonight. Masks and face coverings are an essential component of safety. And as Joe said earlier, they're stopping the spread. There's real risk of Delta variant causing a lot of, a lot of spread. And in these, all these pieces, three masks, face coverings in our schools is a way to limit that and prevent that. We'll talk more about that tonight. The multiple forms of testing, talk more about that, talk more about all these pieces. Continue to ensure ventilation systems are up and running and fully operational. We'll add on to some of those with filtration. Our families and our staff did a tremendous job of staying, when they were sick or having symptoms, we actually occurred that and watching sanitizing basic hygiene practices and then contact tracing and quarantining. So what I'll do is go over each of these tonight, some in more detail than others, and then we'll wrap up by telling you what our next steps are. So first and foremost, vaccinations, as we said tonight, is the single most important thing that anybody can do to to protect themselves, their families and the community from getting this awful disease. What I forget about, because I'm fully vaccinated and I feel, you know, a lot of safety because of that, is COVID still kills people. And it kills people who aren't vaccinated at a much, much higher rate than those who are vaccinated. It is a dangerous, dangerous disease. And it's hard sometimes for me to remember that because I'm not affected by it, because all the folks I know are vaccinated. But those who aren't in our community are in danger. We need to help them do whatever they need to get vaccinated so they're out of danger and they don't put other folks in danger. I'm being really clear about that, but it's backed up by, I think, by the science, as folk would say. My recommendation on staff vaccinations is that we, you put in place a policy that's requirement for employment for staff to be vaccinated, okay? And it's not a statement our our staff are doing, our staff are doing very well with vaccinations. They shared the data with you early in the spring and as schools closing, I'm sure those numbers are even higher now, they're in the 90% range and and higher. It's two things, it's for those last folks who aren't, it's making sure we support them in getting that and making clear that's essential for our safety. It's also a clear message to our families and our community that we're doing everything we can to keep them and their students safe. I'm strongly recommending that to all of you. Of course, there'd be medical release exemptions for staff. I I will say that more and more communities are doing this, especially for the school staff. It's becoming more and more common, there's very strong, you know, labor, you know, legal precedence on these, and we're in good shape in terms of labor law on this. And I've spoken with a few of our labor union partners this afternoon about it as well. I want to characterize our conversations because it was private, but we will also work with our labor representatives on on this specifically. In terms of staff student vaccinations, for COVID, my recommendations are that we work with the mayor's office, Department of Health, on the other agencies to do as much of a citywide campaign, a continuous citywide campaign on getting all eligible students vaccinated, that will probably change as the year goes along, who's eligible, that we are very public. And we are very public about the percentage of students who are fully vaccinated each month, and I'll report that to you. And then also the whole COVID vaccination clinic at O'Malley and at GHS, in the beginning of the school year and throughout the school year. The state has said they'll help us with that, our both Department of Health will as well, we did, we've already done it, we know how to do it. And we'll continue to do it as as needed. We pause there to see if there are questions and discussions about my recommendation.
Question two, Jeff, I think, how will we capture student information the same way as we get the other information on vaccinations?
As far as the vaccination rates without identifiers, the M I I S, the immunization database, is where we can capture that information.
And you know the students that go to Gloucester schools versus Gloucester student residents that may not be in our schools?
You can run reports to identify things, I would need to look into that a little further to identify specifics. But we can get a very good feel for where we are, vaccination rates within our school system specifically. Yeah, because we will be following it as the nurses, because it's important for us to know when contact tracing, this is a big factor. So yes, it it is something we follow. We do it without identifiers, if there's any information released, it would not be specific to the individual.
And your, your release is just percent, broad percentage of numbers, a number of kind of students. The folks who are qualified legally allowed to see that information are, and just our nurses or healthcare staff, Jeff is saying. But we take that information very seriously, protective, you know, use it wisely and are confidential about it in any, in every way we're we're supposed to be. That would be just, you know, percentages wouldn't be any more than that.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Because I had to let Joel in, which is why I was gone, not because I wanted to leave.
Nice.
And I missed the first part of this a little bit, so just masks, I missed that whole.
Oh, yeah, no, you haven't, you haven't, you haven't missed anything.
What did you talk about first?
You you missed your tradition slides, you missed, you missed this, which is just the the table of contents.
Oh, okay.
Yep, and we're on number one, you just heard number one.
We're Sam, Grill, and Jeff.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had it on his phone, but I didn't, so I lost that, I apologize, okay.
And there'll be more, more chances here, so I'll, we'll move on then, okay? So face masks and covering, so as we already discussed tonight, how important they are as a proven way to limit transmission airborne respiratory illnesses. You know, and I think our country is learning that in 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 more than in some other countries have had a practice in masking. Our schools really must try to limit the spread of COVID in our school as much as we can in order to have a normal, regular school day. Every day of school week and school year. As we're talking about the Delta variant, it's much more transmissible. And wearing masks is one simple way to limit that transmission and make sure the upward angle we have now doesn't go steeper, it doesn't go further. And and it makes a tremendous amount of sense to start conservatively and see how we go. Therefore, my recommendation is in alignment with Centers for Disease Disease Control and the American Academy of Pediatrics. That all individuals in our schools are masked, okay, that's pre K through twelve, that's staff and students. I do understand that that's a little bit different than what Desi and Matt G P H are recommending, there's a real difference here. Massachusetts is really doing it in order to incentivize folks to get vaccinations. I think that's, I I I, what I'm urging you to do is is a policy, CDC recommendations. And also we'll do everything we can to get folks vaccinated, that's messaging, communication, that sort of thing. It is one of the simplest steps, most effective steps in keeping folks in school and limiting transmission. And I recommend that we we do that. And we will, for every month, as we did, and we'll answer questions and we'll see how things are going. Right now, with the with the Delta variant going upwards, now is not the time to risk that, especially as we start out. We know we can run school very well and, you know, kids and students, they don't like it, I'm not talking about liking, I don't like them. I'm one of those room like sort of man, I think, okay? But we know we do school very well, we support students, teach students, they can learn very well with masks, it's inconvenient, I get it. But it helps, it helps now, and then we can adjust, and I promise you.
Is there, is there much, sorry to interrupt. Much peer pressure within student bodies, particularly in the high school, I guess? If you get vaccinated or or conversely not?
Yeah, so our students, I'll answer Joe's question and like the the committee, the answer, ask questions as well. Last year, students did a fantastic job masking, I mean, there was, there was concern about whether kids would or not. And they did a tremendous job, there were very little challenges, everyone did it. And we hope for the same this year, I think I'm I'm worried about differences this year. But we really have to do, I hope, if the committee supports the recommendation and enacts as a policy. That we'll be in the same place that folks were supporting it. We have to be prepared for it to be different, but I I hope it'll be the same, we have to do work, if if this is the policy that the school may enact. That we get behind it and everyone supports it, and your schools will be the best they can.
Do you imagine peer pressure to get vaccinated also exists, or?
There's peer pressure for everything, the clinics we ran last year successfully at both O'Malley Middle School and Gloucester High School. There was chatter and there was some influence from peers to encourage people to do it. But at the end of the day, most of the population are minors and it's the family, the parents, the guardian's decision. So the pressure was there, but it it, at the end of the day, was not the decision maker. But I did see it, I saw friends and I saw people that were left in, that were signed up. And that did end up getting vaccinated on multiple occasions with the support of their friends and just knowing that this is for the better of our community. Yep.
Melissa?
I'm gonna ask this because I have to, just because I, this is a conversation, I mean, it might be easy at this table. To make a decision here and now, but knowing there's a lot of chatter in the community about this. And not everybody's on the same page, there's a lot of parents that don't want their vaccinated child to wear masks. Especially at the high school, just as there are as many that do want their children. So this is not a twenty, eighty percent decision here, just from my feedback that I've gotten through conversations. There's a, there's a split in this, and rightfully so. So I guess my question to you is, I'm just gonna prove you a little bit more. We all know wear a mask twenty-four seven for the rest of our lives is gonna prevent us probably from getting the flu and everything else. But that doesn't mean we should wear masks for the rest of our lives and I. I wouldn't say that we're in a position now to know enough about the Delta and COVID to say that we shouldn't be wearing masks. Just because they can prevent us from getting the disease for the rest of our lives. But I I guess I want to hear from you a little bit more on, you said you are open to adjusting if we can. So I guess I want to quote a little bit to find out what is it that you need to see going forward? What your expectations are before you start considering maybe removing a mask mandate at, say, the high school if seventy or eighty percent are vaccinated. I mean, we know getting vaccinated doesn't prevent someone from spreading the disease. That's not a fact, though, I mean, it's still a concern, so where are you in your recommendations that you would need to see? Progress to consider not having the mask mandate be mandatory year long? And that we can look at this on a weekly, monthly, daily basis, or whatever it is that we've been doing for the past year when it comes to COVID?
I think one of, I just wanted, how does something you said, Melissa, I think is super important, is we know that vaccinated folks can spread the disease, especially Delta. That may be perhaps the single most important reason we're masked, right? Because we don't want to spread it, right? That's that's the reason, that's one of our main needs to be, our communities and our schools, therefore, in main focus is non-spreading this thing, okay? So that's very important, even if you're vaccinated, right? I I'm, I will not make those decisions about that, you'll be informed by other folks, as well as state folks, as well as local folks in terms of the numbers and what it means, okay? I'll just give you one example, though, the COVID cases can't be going up. You know, they've got to be low and and they got to be declining or flat, and right now they're going up, you know? So that's the simple, the simplest, one of the simplest metrics. And so that, and and that's what we, that's one thing we look at, and then we look at, you know. We will, we will know, I'm 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 assuming, it's like that, you'll know more information on how this plays out. If there isn't transmission in schools, then, you know, and we're in here for sure of that, or, you know. We haven't seen transmission in schools, then I think it's, then that is a step we could take, you know? We we were prepared to do different measures last year, if you remember, you know, close a grade, you know, or close a school. I mean, you know, a classroom more than a grade or a school or multiple schools, we didn't have to do any of that thankfully. But that's a sort of steps, you know, sort of a step by step approach we could be doing this as well. But that, in terms of metrics, I don't have metrics, no one has metrics on that right now. But one clear metric is it's got to be declining or flat, it's got to be low, it's not, it's not, it's low now. But it's going, the angle is the wrong, the wrong way.
And I just wanted to ask that question to the health experts that are here, so we we heard it's like two, a little bit more than two and a half percent, I think, in the city of Gloucester. What is considered low, is two percent low or is two percent, I mean, we have thirty thousand people in Gloucester?
It it depends what window you're looking at, the chart, the graph that he, Joe had showed earlier is an excellent example of. Where, what we can see during certain months, certain seasons. When we get everyone back inside and when we have different variants, such as the Delta variant, that is extremely contagious.
Right.
So when we're seeing the little uptick on the BIOBOT, we need to watch that, if it continues to go up, that's a concerning trend.
But is two percent a low rate or a concerning rate, I don't know the answer to that.
I I would say, given the past year, it is a lower rate. But summer traditionally is a lower time, it's an outdoor gathering and we have smaller circles, so.
By way of comparison, just so you know, at the height of COVID, which is actually just in January.
Okay.
We were getting thirty-six cases a day.
Yeah.
New cases a day. And had a running total of a hundred and sixty-seven cases for three weeks running. So that's where we were.
And what was that percentage rate then, I'm just trying to think of a number.
That I couldn't tell you. No, I understand.
Is that like ten percent or twenty percent?
No, it was pretty high, it's like, no, it's like seven or eight.
Seven or eight, okay.
Yeah, so it was pretty high, it could have been higher than that, I'd have to get that information for you to look at. But that's where we're at, so, you know, when you ask how many people do you need to have vaccinated and everything else, hundred percent be great, I'm all for it. So I don't think you're gonna get much of a different answer from Public Health on that. So the idea is that we protect people to the best of our abilities and we have the ability to do that. The idea is that we protect people who need not, and that's what we're doing.
Okay.
So just to, just to touch on the superintendent just said, I think it's important that we remember, and if I'm incorrect, please, you know, stop me. Last year, we had those contingencies shut down the grade, shut down the school, shut down the class. Because remote learning was time on learning and counting. This year, if we have to wipe out the West Parish fifth grade, those students are just absent. There is no remote academy, they're not in school, DESI will not allow them to be educated remotely.
Right.
And so as as non-ideal as remote learning may have been, if, you know, again, we were very lucky last year, we played it safe and played it smart. And not to send home entire swaths of students. But if there was a year to do it, it would have been last year because there was backup safety nets available for continuing education. In this situation, if you just shut down fifth grade at West Parish, those students are just missing two weeks of school, period, they're not logging in from home. You know, this is a much different result if you have to do this kind of shutdown, is that correct?
That's in terms of what the state is allowing right now, you're exactly right, you know, I think that's, that's important, terms of putting it, honestly, we don't have options here, so. In some ways, I mean, you know, the conclusion, you know, the, what that makes you, the thing to think more about is, you know, everything we can do. To keep the kids in school.
As important as it was last year, it's arguably more important this year in the school because there is no out of school option. Last year, this time, we were talking about seeing how far we'd get before we had to pivot to an online option, there's no pivot available this year, at this point, there's not.
I have some comment.
No, no, just, I just, just following up on that, I mean, last year, DESI was all sort of late in a lot of guidance. Or, you know, they were giving the guidance sort of as we were heading right into things. And I'm wondering this year, what you're hearing sort of in the ether about, would, you know, I'm, I'm, my understanding is that if we really get into a bad situation. If the Commonwealth districts are having to close grades, do you think there's a chance they'll change that recommendation and allow that to be time for special learning?
Like, there's no way that we're raising that, or, I mean, it's, it'd be pure speculation, honestly, yeah, like, I don't know.
That's true, it's like.
They're still coming out with more recommendations, we're having a public hearing on this one, to hear from teachers, to hear from, hopefully, all the teachers. I know we're gonna do a survey of what we wanted, but also remember that last year, feedback on Joel, we had Zoom. Kids weren't, we didn't have a hundred percent kids in school all day. And we didn't have full classrooms and we could social distance. And you've got to make up a choice, so we we can't do, we're not even doing six feet now, and we're adults. And so we're gonna do the six feet, are they gonna do the three feet, what's gonna happen during lunch? So if children come in masked, is everything free, meaning you don't have to social distance? They're gonna sit regular classrooms, the teacher's in front, what are we, outside, no mask, we need to discuss what's gonna happen during the lunchroom, so we all know what we're doing, so. Because I can imagine all you, your phones must be ringing and whatever, you know, texting, what's asked this or whatever, but the fact is, last year, we had half the classes. Because a lot were homeschooled. This year, if they're all gonna, and they were, not all day, this year, it's gonna be all day, correct? Is that what you're planning, all day?
Yeah.
All, all schools open, all children who want to come in, I mean, I don't know what the parents are gonna do, but all day, and their class, their desk is gonna be what, usual?
Yeah, usual, and then that'll vary, you know, and and again, try to get as much space as we can, but also the does, small groups are gonna happen, kids are gonna be sitting next to each other, and the teacher will be working with them. And I think, I, you know, just the bill you were saying, Mayor, I think, in order to do that, in order to have a regular, normal school, the way we want to operate, we know, we know works best. And be different than last year, which was no lunch and not full days for a long time. Yeah, we have to make some steps here, and and masks is one of those, I I believe.
Yeah, I would like to highlight that unlike the beginning of last year, we have the ability to be outside without masks, socializing with a little bit of distancing. So they're getting that interaction that they did not have for the majority of last year, so.
Samantha, please.
So in theory, if we were to say the high school, if you're vaccinated, you don't need to wear a mask. Do we have a system to even track that?
That is a very challenging question, we can.
Or is it just beyond a system?
We can identify, we have the immunization database that will confirm that someone has been vaccinated.
But I don't know if I, if you want to speak to the management of that.
Yeah.
Right, who's managing that?
Is very, very complicated.
Yes.
And I don't even know if everyone is addressed, but other than that, I mean.
So in theory, so in theory, later on, at some point, when we have a system in place where we can verify vaccinations, this might change.
Yeah, the direction I would prefer to go is if the risk is low, because vaccinated or unvaccinated, you can spread it. So if the rest of the factors are there and saying that we're doing great community wide.
Right.
County wide, statewide.
Yeah.
I think that's a bigger factor than the immunization rates, because that is a very challenging dynamic to handle.
Right.
And if that's the direction we go, we will make a plan and we can make it happen.
Joel? So this is quite for a principle, Coach, one of the concerns I have in thinking about a mask recommendation for the high school. You know, I certainly appreciate that there might be some guidance in state that's trying to, you know. Get an incentivization and say, hey, you know, if you get vaccinated, you can pop that mask off, right, there's your friend, he's got a mask on because he's vaccinated, right? But as was pointed out, it's not the fifteen year old's choice typically, it's the fifteen year old's parent's choice, right? And so my concern would be, and I'm curious if you'd share this concern, is that this would be. Another ability in which students would be othered from each other without their persons. It's one thing if I choose to wear something that's gonna other me, right, making my personal choice, the fifteen year old becoming an apparent person. But if I'm showing up and I've got my mask on because I'm not vaccinated. And you don't know if it's because I like refused myself as a fifteen year old, you know, it's because I've asked, my parents have refused to allow me to, right? It's just another instance in which a fifteen year old, which is hard enough, it's hard to be fifteen in the best of circumstances, right? Where go, oh, you know, this is just one more thing in which there's this social societal component that is distracting. And potentially stressful and potentially, you know.
Ostracizing.
Right, and so you don't know why that kid isn't, maybe the kid's vaccinated and just wants to mask. And you have someone saying like, oh, look who so and so, you know, they're not doing their part or whatever, and it's a total bogus accusation because they in fact are, they're just being super safe, right? So it just seems to me, do you, do you agree that this is, you know, has a potential for creating othering between the students?
Certainly, yeah, social, any, any, anything of of this kind, and then again, you don't know the reason. And and certainly it is the case that there are differences between teenagers and parents about these sorts of decisions. That we see regularly, and then it's ultimately the parent's decision, so sure, yeah, that could certainly be an area of conflict and for othering within the school.
So it seems to me, again, you know, this idea of like if it's masks on or off are based more on this community wide thing, not individual choice. Then students aren't necessarily wearing like a bad, like a scarlet letter on their. not individual choice, then students aren't necessarily wearing like a, a bad, like a scarlet letter on their face, what they or their parents have or have not chosen for their family and their, their house situation, you know?
We're doing what's best would be the image that comes up with that.
Right.
Sure, yeah, just, everyone's, it's just, you know, either everyone's wearing a mask or everyone's, you know, the option. Again, if, if the option to not wear a mask and choose to wear a mask, it's fine, but then everyone stops somebody, but it just feels like if there's a, if there's a, the theory, there's a, there's reasons behind why you don't, what you are or are not.
Yeah.
And people are making judgments and inferences that just leads to, you know, we're trying to get these students educated.
Yeah. Our goal is to keep them in school and Melissa, there will be light at the end of the tunnel, but I right now don't know how long that tunnel is. And I really hope it's a short one.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, about the vaccine mandate, um, that you're suggesting, um, have you polled the staff at all to find out what their feeling is on that? I mean, I know the MTA has come out, I know Laura sent us an article, the MTA is saying yes, but if you go on the MTA webpage, you have a lot of teachers yelling at their own selves, saying, well, that's not my opinion. So even though the message might come from the organization, it doesn't necessarily mean everyone's on board. So I'm just wondering what feedback, if any, you've gotten from our staff to, on that topic, cause that's gonna be a lot of controversy in itself.
Yeah, so, so not a whole lot, I spoke to the, um, a couple of union leaders, a few of your leaders rather. Um, I'm not gonna share those conversations and then where, and what we talked about. Um, I will say this is that, please remember that it's a very small group of staff who aren't vaccinated, right? So this, so the poll, the poll in the survey doesn't really need to happen because it's just really a very few outliers in a sense.
Teachers, is this just teachers or the whole?
It's all, it's all staff, okay? Um, anybody who works their abilities.
Thank you.
Okay, um, and so, um, just to finish that thought, um, so, uh, it, it's not stated about the, 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 how great our staff is doing, they're doing very, very well in vaccinations, everyone should know that. It's about the, the, the remaining small numbers. And it's also a, a real statement to the community that we're doing everything we can to make sure your, your children are safe. And this is something we can do, and we can do it legally, responsibly, and we can make exceptions in two areas, medical and religious, where we need to, you know? So it's, um, I think we got strong background on that or backing on that. And it's a step, again, it's a step we can take legally and I'm recommending, and it's not onerous. Um, and it does provide for us a couple of tensions, um, and it's being done in other places as well, so I think we have strong, we're on strong footing. And those are the reasons.
So I just wouldn't lose sight of the fact, I mean, I know people getting vaccinated and, and we're, we're a great percentage, and we're grateful for those that made that decision.
Absolutely.
But I think is a clear difference in getting vaccinated because you want to versus mandating it as a job requirement. So I don't know that all the people or all the, um, staff that did get vaccinated would still say, yes, it should be a mandate. Cause there's a difference there, I'm someone that I got vaccinated right away, I feel that's the right thing to do. But I don't think a mandate is right all the time in, in certain circumstances, knowing that this is not a full-approved vaccine. You know, it's still early in the stages, so I think there's difference in that too. So that's why I asked if you polled, not necessarily to find out who's vaccinated or not, but.
No, I understand, yeah.
Just to see the feeling on a working condition as being vaccinated.
Sure, and I know.
And how will cloud move that challenge?
Yeah, yeah, I get the distinction about I, I'm okay for vaccines myself, but I'm not for, uh, uh, you know, employment, employer mandate. I totally get that distinction, um, you know. I do understand that most of the things I'm recommending, I will not make everyone happy. Um, and, and all of us know that, and yet we're put in positions where we have to make difficult decisions that won't make everybody happy. And this is, no matter how we, you, you folks come out on these, that's gonna happen, but that's why we're in these positions.
Joel? So as, as relates to your recommendation for the initial employment, um, I've been thinking about this a lot, and one of the thoughts I keep thinking was, you know, this time last year, based on the data we had, for the most part, COVID wasn't really sickening, injuring, and certainly not killing students, right? At this time last year, and we made them go to a four-hour school day, skip lunch, miss recess, mask up all day long, say three feet away, to keep the adults in the room safe and alive. And that was the right thing to do because we're a society, we take care of each other. Now the shoe was on the other foot, there are adults in the room who can take a step, i.e. vaccinate, to greatly increase their ability to keep the children who kept them safe last year by making all those sacrifices, safe this year because the, the eight-year-old student can't go get the vaccine right now. And so this, this mandate to me, I think, seems a lot like the same thing we asked our students to do last year to keep the grownups safe. Is now we're asking the grownups to do everything they can to keep the students safe. And so I don't necessarily have a problem with what you're recommending, and I think in fact, it is repayment, if nothing else, for the student and immunocompromised population, which everything they could, even though again, you know, these, eight, an eight-year-old last year was at less risk of getting hurt by COVID than they are now. And they still had their gear detonated and turned upside down to keep the adults safe for the most part, keep their families safe, keep communities safe, certainly, right? And so I've seen a part of this, this mandate you're suggesting as, you know, as paying back the favor, you know? They, they sacrificed when they had to to keep people safe, and we're asking this group that was now safe, that vaccinated, to do what they can to keep this, the now vulnerable population, which is the kids again, safe, right? I, I, to me, I, I see it as, as equity, see it as, you know, stepping up where others just stepped up before you. And it's the same two groups, one help A help B, and our B needs to help A.
Any other questions?
You have more, right?
Well, there's more. Stop sharing when I start again. These, I think, get a, a little, uh, more straightforward from here. Um, so we'll use the same two types of testing in school that we did last year. Uh, that's the rapid, uh, the Binax now rapid antigen testing, um, and then also the weekly, you know, group testing, which is PCR testing. We'll use them in a little bit different ways for different purposes to some degree. Um, but primarily, we wanna make sure they will help us know that any transmission is happening in the schools. Um, and also, very importantly, this, they'll be used differently in the sense that they'll help us minimize the number of staff and students who need to quarantine, quarantine outside of school. I'll go into that in a little more detail. So the two types of testing, diagnostic testing, testing, sorry, the rapid antigen testing will be used for students or staff who have symptoms in school, symptoms are positive. We used it the same way last year, folks remember. So if a, a student comes in and their first period class or, you know, as, as they arrive, they talk about, or any time during the day, you know, have a couple, have a symptom or two, um, staff will have them go down to the nurse, and the nurse will give them a rapid test, and if it's positive, they go home. And it's, if it's not, um, they still go home, but, uh, at least we know that they're, you know, you can tell at that moment. The other piece is that we can test asymptomatic students and staff who are close contacts in school, uh, to keep them in school and not having to quarantine. But when it's more a little bit, but just, just, just to highlight that, 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 the rapid antigen testing can help us keep folks.
Recording in progress.
At work, um, if they're deemed close contacts. Weekly group, uh, weekly PCR testing, pool testing from last year, um, uh, unvaccinated students who consent and staff, and staff who cannot be vaccinated, this will be used for them, okay? Last year, you remember, we did a PCR test, the weekly group testing at O'Malley and, um, and GHS, we can still continue that. At the same time, um, the mass TPH is, is recommending that those who are vaccinated do not participate. Okay? Don't leave the science behind that, don't make somebody up here does, um. So that means that it's gonna be of less use at O'Malley and, um, and GHS.
I apologize, my computer died and I'm trying to fix that.
Some reason.
Just turn on the volume.
No, but I had my computer on all day and it says no battle, what, what's going on?
Okay, I apologize.
Sorry, sorry.
I'll look that way when I talk.
We can hear you better, but, so, um, um, what was I, yeah, but we will be doing, and we're working with the state and, and, and Jeff is gonna be, doing a lot of work on something next week and a half, on having weekly, um, PCR testing, group testing at elementary schools.
But not middle and high?
No, middle and high, yes, but it's gonna be less impactful, effective because so many were vaccinated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the reason for that is to minimize the false positives that they get.
Great, I, I would speculate on that, but I didn't wanna say that.
So, back to the, we don't want people to be singled out or different, how are you going to do that at a middle and high school?
There, just like last, uh, you're opting in for the weekly for the testing.
I guess my other question is, uh, last year, we knew what percent of students participated.
Yeah.
Out of the, or, and staff out of the total.
Right.
We don't know the total. In other words, this will identify people who may be positive or that there's positive around. But you're doing such a small fraction of the school, it won't help us as a benchmark to say that our school in total has made progress or that, um, you, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, no, I do, I know.
If we have eighty percent of people doing the test.
Right, yeah.
And it comes back that, you know, we have three weeks where no one's positive, that's really good news with which to talk about our policies, right? But if you're only testing a very small fraction, probably fifteen percent of the school's student body, then that information only helps.
Yeah.
Those positive tests, but it doesn't help us as a committee to hopefully get us to a better place as yet another one of those benchmarks.
Yeah.
That gets us in a better.
So the, the reasoning, it was, I feel effective even with lower turnout is that the fifteen percent, we're all not, not all sitting in five different classrooms. This was spread very thoroughly throughout the entire building, so we're getting a read from each classroom, each nook in the building. So that's how we, we feel that we had a pretty good picture, even with the lower turnout rate. And it, it is the community buying, how many people would participate in non-invasive testing?
It, so, and, and, but the point's all taken is, is.
Yeah.
We don't know how, how many people are assigned to participate, we don't know that yet. You know, there'll be, it'll, it could be the same numbers, it could be lower numbers than last year. Um, probably will be lower numbers because less people, you know, we won't recommend that folks who are vaccinated take it. Same time, last year, we had the combination of the pool testing results and other, and whatever other positive we had in close contacts and sort of stuff, so we will have the rapid antigen testing at the high school definitely, we'll probably be doing more of that than we did last year, so. Um, that's why I said it's, it's not quite as effective or not quite the same thing as last year at O'Malley and, and GHS. So I agree, it makes it more complicated. Um, but I think, I think the combination of whatever testing we do have on the weekly testing at the high school at O'Malley, plus whatever we see in, in close contacts happening and cases happening will give us a, a, a best possible candidate.
So, um, a few minutes ago, Joe made a comment, um, and as an example, that kids are gonna be home for two weeks because they don't, and we don't have Zoom and we can't count those on days on learning. But it sounds to me that the way we're gonna be testing, um, isn't gonna have kids out for a week at a time. Um, you'll be able to, instead of saying the whole class can't come in, you'll be able to differentiate between the, with the testing, which students have to be home and which don't, so can you elaborate on?
Yeah, let me jump in. Yeah, no, no, not next slide, but let me jump in on it, because, because, um, there's a lot more nuance now on identifying close contacts and quarantines.
Right.
And I'll, I'll just give you a couple of examples here because it's an area where the state isn't very clear about this. They have group protocols out, they released them on, on thirteen. But putting that into language and directions that people, that fans can follow, their staff can follow, should do some work on it, take it in half, okay? But let me just jump to that, so it's more complex, different protocols. For those who are vaccinated, unvaccinated, asymptomatic, asymptomatic, have gotten tested, won't get tested, are in close contacts or are not in close contacts, okay? So all those things matter about what happens, whether you're, when you're deemed, when you have, may have had exposure, okay? There are essentially three different types of protocols, a separate individual who tests positive, that's actually the same slash. Test positive, okay, in school, outside of school, your, your minimum of ten days, and if there's a resolution, that's same as last year. That's just for folks who test, I can test positive, okay? Asymptomatic close contacts have protocol B one, B two, and B three, okay? Symptomatic individuals have protocol C one and C two, okay? I'm just gonna give you probably the most significant one, which is, which is B one, and this is called test and stay, okay? It's just one of them. It's for folks who are in close contacts in school or outside of school but have no symptoms, okay? That happened a lot last year, okay, hopefully it happens, hopefully of all close contacts, that happens the most, okay? These folks can stay in school if they do a few things, okay? Stay in school, stay at work. They don't have to quarantine at all, as long as they stay masked all times at school, which of course will hopefully will be our policy, except for eating and drinking, obviously. They take a rapid antigen test, the Binax test, every day, okay? Um, and receive a negative result, okay? And they actively monitor for symptoms and remain seven free during that time, okay? It's a seven-day timeframe, that's the duration of test and stay, presumably five of those days are in school, obviously, in, in a weekend. Um, those five days, each day to have the rapid, to have the rapid test, okay? So that's a sort of a common occurrence, close contact, no symptoms, that happened a lot last year, but folks couldn't be at work or couldn't be at school, okay? In this situation, what, what DESI is saying, Mass DPH is saying is, if you follow this approach, then you're good to stay in school, stay at work. But folks may say, no, I don't want to do the test. And then they followed similar protocol last year and they're pinned out, um, for the, for those seven days, basically. Um, and there's one more version of this as well, something to be prepared, so, is that?
Helpful.
Yeah, helpful, but also explains like there's, like that complexity for our nurses, and we will need additional staff to help our nurses do the testing, do this complicated protocol, it's okay, they're gonna need more people, that's that.
So just, this may be a huge effort to, so it looks like we're relying on the rapid antigen test, the way we, as, as a definitive test.
So, so I've been, I've only, I've given everything here. So we, we, we certainly have seen, and, and Mass DPH to back this up and Mass DESI, and DESI backs it up, and, and really, the Binax antigen test last year went through a lot of, I mean, what happened a lot of places, okay? And as they've shared with us, and, you know, the data on that, it, it seems quite reliable and much more reliable than early, earlier tests, antigen tests, okay? It still isn't the gold standard, and folks will be backed up and need to be backed up in certain cases if they show, if, if it's a positive test, positive result on the antigen. Okay, so it's not, so it's sort of in between what I was saying and what you finished your ass. So that's, I wanted to maximize.
Yes, absolutely, you got it.
I mean, it just seems like, I know at the beginning of last year, it wasn't quite good enough, and then you said it improved and we started using it, I remember.
Because, because they used it a lot to prove this, actually.
Right, and so that's great, and it just, just wanna be sure that this is safe enough, because if we have kids in school who have our close contacts, who we know, we're saying you can be in school as long as you are negative on this test.
Asymptomatic and negative, yeah, yeah, and continuing to have those symptoms.
From my experience, last year within the schools, each positive weekly testing pool, we did identify the positive individual by using avid Binax now testing across the board every time.
Great.
So, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Jeff. So I'm just jumping back a little bit, air quality ventilation, so we'll continue to work with TPW, DPW did a fantastic job last year with Siemens and others to get, make sure our ventilations are working as designed, um, and they need to keep on being monitored and repaired, okay? Um, we'll continue to work with TPW on that, um, they need to get through some of the summer work and some of the things they're still doing to get our schools up and running. Um, but this also will continue, we'll work with them on it. Um, and then also through our, what they've been very good as well is just to be a quick response, as I shared with you at the end of last year, in terms of the ticket system or work order system, it will make sure that our staff know how to make, you know, use that, especially when it comes to ventilation units, that sort of thing. Infiltration units, we are working, Gary's working on identifying, um, what, what is possible for filtration units? What units are available, what units work in spaces across our district, okay? And how many we can get, that'll be sort of addition as we go along, okay? So this happened, in many cases right now, um, we're a little, we're in some ways way ahead of last year, okay? Cause we've done it all, the other way is because things dramatically changed in the last, in two or three weeks, when for most of July, we're expecting something very different, in some ways, we're, we're behind on things, okay? So we're gonna have this stuff in place as soon as we can, infiltration units is a sample of that. Um, that, the most likely that'll be happening as we go on during the school year, but it really is possible.
Is this filtration in addition to what was there last year, or is filtration pulled out and now we're bringing it back in?
No, this is, no, this is in addition to, in, in what we had last year, or the top two we had last year.
So all, all the ionization units are still there where they were, right? So we're just building on what we did last year, not, we didn't wipe them out.
Right, exactly.
And are we still, the guidance, my understanding was, is if you had windows that opened, you should open them?
Yeah, yeah.
Does that continue to be our?
That continues in our, you know, staff, you know, folks had different tolerance levels as the air got colder. But a lot of places, a lot of, you know, as I went to class, there were a lot of folks that had. as the air got cold, but a lot of places, a lot of, you know, as I went to class, there were a lot of folks that opened, kids were wearing, kids and staff were wearing warmer jackets. That's an important strategy and we urge people to continue that up to their tolerance level. And that's why we'll also add filtration. Uh, in terms of St. Anne's, because that's a new building for us this year, or, you know, returning building. You know, it does not have a ventilation system, it's an old building, okay? It's it's, you know, steam or, you know, radiators, and it has the biggest windows you can imagine, and a lot of them.
Absolutely huge.
Yeah, and they and they, almost all of them work, in the last few that don't, we are making sure they work when school starts. So that's a place that will, we already have filtration systems for those, filtration units rather, for those classrooms. And we'll get more for the other spaces in the in the building there. You know, so that's not perfect, but we will have open windows and and like I said, they're 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 great big windows and and they will ventilate rapidly as long as they're open.
And lots of breathing.
Lots of windows, I mean, there are a lot of windows. You know, so that's gonna be something we gotta keep an eye on, obviously, um, you know, and 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 we will. You going?
Yeah.
Not too many here, health, and then this is just best practice, healthy and safe hygiene practices. I, you know, our families and also our staff did a fantastic job, and if you're, you know, feeling sick or have to stay home, that is still crucial, that will always be crucial, that will never change, so you know that. Okay, that's one thing we learned is, we will move away from masks at some point, we should never move away from this, this practice. Hand hygiene still matters, we have our sanitized stations everywhere, just like we had last year, those will continue to be refilled. We remind people again and again of washing before eating, sanitizing before eating. Of course, cover your mouth and nose when you cough and then sanitize your hands as well. So all those sort of healthy practices will continue to regenerate message, and talk about that. Lunch and breakfast, a few other important areas, lunch and breakfast, so as I said, returning to regular meals, hot, cold, unmasked with assigned seats. We'll maximize distance as much as possible in in our cafeterias. Our folks are presently working hard on that and how to do it, they'll vary in different schools. They're also looking at outs- at outside lunch if possible, but that is enormously complicated because of number one there, that we have regular meals, entrees, hot and cold meals, a combination of things. That's easier when everything's bagged, but we don't want everything bagged, we want regular school meals. So, but we're working hard on that and we'll do the best we can to distancing as much as possible and get some masks for them.
I just wanna back up a little bit, I couldn't catch you in between the two.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
So I like the idea of you saying, you know, you don't feel good, stay home.
Yeah, yeah.
And all that, which is extremely important with this disease that we do not know a lot about. But I noticed in one of the handbooks I was reading, it kind of differentiated between coming to school sick and not, and it said, you know, your average cold, it kind of situates with your average cold, you should come to school. You just have to read the policy and and admit today that you're not gonna be as strict with that stay at home if you just don't feel good. Statement because it kind of, the language we have kind of encourages you to come to school if you're not really sick. But we know during this time of COVID, you can't distinguish a little sore throat could be a sign of COVID. Where before we'd say, oh, just go to school, you don't have strep. So I just hope that we're mindful of that and not attacking our attendance policy. Um, if kids aren't coming to school because they do have a little sore throat, when they should rightfully stay home now.
Yeah, I think, you know, I, listen, this is a, this is a tricky, tricky piece of this, right? Because we know, even if it's a sore throat, staying home makes a difference, right?
But we just approved a handbook that kind of said you should come to school.
No, at the same time, we also know that being a schooler, it really matters a ton, and we have attendance challenge. You know, besides COVID, we have a attendance challenge, it's one of the real things that James and staff and O'Malley and across our schools, we gotta work on, right? So this is one of those things that we try to be clear, and it's kind of hard to be clear, you know, because we want them to school every day, but we want them to be healthy and safe, so healthy, we don't want, you know, this is sort of our common responsibility of the community, right? Can't just think about yourself, you gotta think about others as well, you know, and keeping them safe. And that's, you know, we're, we're, we did a great job on it last year, we're gonna keep on doing the best we can.
And with the resources we have in-house and in collaboration with the primary care physicians, students may be cleared to come back by the primary care with very mild or very innocent, so that is the discretion of the the physician.
So lunch and breakfast, uh, and and as I said before, those will be free for everybody, which is great. Athletics, still determining if there are any separate protocols for sports, outdoor and indoor, most of our sports obviously are outdoors. And then the fall volleyball, volleyball is indoors, as you folks know, especially at the high school, we'll have sports at O'Malley as well. But our athletics, you know, team led by Brian Mafada and our coaches did a fantastic job last year in very difficult circumstances. But right now, we're fully operational, as of now, we're moving ahead. But there'll be some more things to to work on in that, clearly, and transportation, same as last year in terms of masks, masks on, windows open. Um, it is a requirement, a federal requirement actually, for masks beyond transportation. That's something we can, that's part of our policy, but but it's not something we can actually mess with. The no limits on spacing or numbers. Desi is saying or following this guideline about close contacts won't be identified on transportation if students are masked and windows are open. We're doing both those things, we won't have close contacts identified on the bus, okay? Uh, there was a very limited amount of that last year, but it took a lot of work to figure that out. So we will have more kids on the bus this year. Steps to come, so we will continue to work on, I mean, this is coming up really fast, right? But continue to work through details on lunch, we'll identify needing rooms and the additional filtration. Need to do, you know, ongoing communication with families, so it's a complete redo our website in terms of, you know, is there protocols and 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 that sort of thing. And change the code scheme too. We'll work with Desi to operate all testing and work, and Jeff will lead that with his team. And then also clear communication to families and staff about COVID protocols so they can follow that. That'll take a bunch of work as well. And then, um, just some suggested access for all of you. Obviously, the committee's having a public hearing, I believe, from tonight. At that point, the intention is to vote on the mask and stat vaccination policies. I, what I hand out to you is the MASC recommended policy of face coverage, you've all seen, and also our face covering policy, maybe from last year. There are a lot of similarities in it, but just so you have that to consider.
Is it MASC or MAS?
MASC, did I say, oh, I'm sorry, I labeled wrong, MASC, it's yours. MA, MASC, it's it's your, not mine. Then, uh, as needed, we'll work with labor union partners on any areas that require the close association too. Where you need the you and 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 I imagine you'll be involved in that too, if necessary. And just to remind folks, I mean, you know, a lot of work tonight and a lot of work between now and and August thirtieth, August thirty first, and ongoing work, okay? But the intention here is to have a regular school day every day for the whole school year, okay? It's gonna, and these are the things and much more that we do in our schools every day, that we wanna do, we need to do, and our students and staff really enjoy doing. So there are, you know, sacrifices we need to make for the common good and the common health. I would prefer not to any of them, but we really have to take, um, our, you know, we have to be really serious about this, it's a dangerous disease still. We want our kids in every day again. That's the.
Okay, that's it.
That's it for me speaking.
Okay. As I said before, we'll have a public hearing on this and then a week from tonight, and we will take notes on those two recommendations. Are you have a question?
I just wanna, for next week, I'm assuming that Joe and Max won't be here, but will we have an update on cases and where our trajectory is?
Yeah, yes, like Max, absolutely.
Okay, because I want to make sure we keep getting that now.
Just like last year.
Ben, we send an update out to Ms. Ben as the superintendent, as well as the administration and the city council.
Okay, that's up to us.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
So, um, so I've been wondering what the Department of Health is doing also for increased communication to, you know, like last year, we kind of knew by week, and I know, you know, we don't probably wanna be there, given the cases are not, you know, as bad as they were last year, but is there gonna be this universal message, you know, just more regularly coming in from various sources, Department of Health saying, please get vaccinated, we are doing everything we can to keep our kids in school, we're doing everything we can to keep our community healthy and and safe, I just think the more we just send the message that it's the responsibility of all of us, like we're taking care of our school community, but it would be great if our school community, if our whole community took care of our school community as well, so.
No, absolutely, and I think today was a perfect example of that, the smart nine one one message that went out. Just encouraging people, probably might have doing more of that, but also providing more public updates on where our case status is, and if we do see sharp optics for any particular reason. Obviously, being in communication, uh, the school administration and many, so everybody know if we see optics, especially in school.
And there's also the Board of Health dot com that's being set up too, so, yes. Luckily, we didn't have to do that, we had a little bit of break, like you said, and and then all of a sudden boom again, so.
And Facebook page too.
Everything on my Facebook page.
No, but actually, they had a text.
Yes.
Yes, they do share your.
Yes, they do, yes, they do, and they also have their own out, you know, the Board of Health dot com, it's gonna, you know, it's all being set. Um, I just, if you see I'm on my phone, it's because when we sent out the raid, it usually goes right away on the Board of Health, my Facebook page, social media, everything else. But because we had, um, update IT, it didn't go out, it didn't go out to the counselor, so I'm working on that, sending it out, just post it, so everyone can do that. You know, the rock glitches, we're working on.
No, sir.
What is the plan for vaccine clinics? I mean, I I'm hearing, you know, we're probably gonna need a booster coming and just go to vaxfinder dot com. I mean, if it's any indication of what was like last time when we wanted to get vaccines, I mean, it was difficult.
It was difficult to start with and then got easier, so.
Well, it got easier as more people bought vaccine, but now we're gonna be depending on the CVSs and the Walgreens and places like that, which is gonna be helpful.
So we're talking right, exactly, and hopefully the the vaccine will be approved by the FDA for general use. And primary care physicians will all put up and be able to distribute vaccine as well. I'd also keep in mind, and Ben alluded to that, so I think somebody else did as well, we still have flu season to worry about. So right now, our public health nurses, who are both part-time, with the department right now, are geared towards setting up vaccine clinics just for older populations of the, uh, Chris Clark and McPherson, et cetera. Because it's a fixed population, it's easy for us to go door to door and handle it discreetly and quickly. In terms of large public vaccination clinics for flu, we don't necessarily intend on doing that right now. When it comes to vaccine clinics for COVID, it's not in the works, just simply because there isn't enough capacity for that. And there is enough other venues for that vaccine to be had in order to, you know, help, you know, alleviate some of the pressure, like I said, we still have approximately seven thousand people that need to be vaccinated, but there are also a number of places where they can get vaccine. And so the hope is that, I know that some of the pharmacies that have been providing it, that hit or miss occasionally on whether or not they're offering it, but by and large, they are. So that's where we're at at the moment. If situation changes, I mean, you know, the administration's been a very good partner in this. And we need to increase capacity in order to be able to hold, you know, some discreet clinics, and we will, but it's gonna be very focused on the most endangered people, uh, immunocompromised, you know, et cetera, and also, so, we'll see, we'll leave it there.
And also, the Board of Health is also, um, we see the grant they're going to my bill exactly, work with some certain communities, is why aren't you, like you said, what Joe said earlier, why aren't you getting vaccine, it's their parents or is it because they don't know enough information or they're hearing everyone else and the care pressure? I also have seniors who their children are caregivers, they won't give them. So it's not just children, we have a lot of seniors now, and and we're looking at that, that they're saying I wanted to, but my daughter said she won't, I can't. So, and we're working with everyone around to see what we need to do.
Another my question too is looking a little bit forward to that, to the booster. So they're saying it's gonna run out in eight months, you know, for me, that's November, because I got vaccinated in March. So come November, if we're all able to get the vex, the booster by then, which they're saying could be, is there gonna be booster vaccine clinics set up in our community?
So the saying of booster is actually a misnomer, it's actually a third.
Third shot, yeah.
Third shot, it's what what they're promoting, and I agree, it's, apples won't be on it, doesn't really make that much of a difference, but the fact of the matter is that it can be, what's helpful is the fact that Moderna war applies there. And you can get either or, the preference is that you get the vaccine that you received initially, but failing that you could get the other as well, so that broadens the scope a little bit. But again, it's a capacity issue, it's whether or not we have the on-the-ground capacity in terms of the health department, which we're running a little bit on the ground at the moment. Whether or not we're gonna have that increased capacity, but again, that's a conversation we'll have with the administration, we'll forward it. And again, it's gonna have to be very focused, but we're counting on, not counting, I should say, but we're hoping on the fact that the FDA is going to move forward with, um, approving the vaccine so that physicians can do it as well.
Remember, this is not state issue. They're not, like, there's no state of emergency.
Right.
And there's no, you know, CARES Act and all these programs that were before. And it's totally different, and right now, it's like not mandated by the state by masks, so everyone's going whatever which way and what we can and what we can't do. I've gone all the, all the private schools who said, you know, like you do, uh, uh, Ben, you have to be mandated. I have things from certain hospitals, as he said, were amazing, they're mandating, they're gonna be mandated in October, all staff to be, um, vaccinated, they're going through all of that. Some people who had bad reactions to the second one, I'm never gonna take another one again. So it's not like, okay, it's here, we're gonna have this mandate, because a lot of people are saying, I am never going again. I was, I'm not, and so we have to let them know that, you know what? Maybe that it's good that you got the second one, had that kind of reaction, because if you got COVID, you could have died. That's telling you what's happening in your body, it's how do you, how do you explain things when you get all these different things? And so some of the Board of Health are gonna be focused on actually, you know, educating and what you need to do so they can, and if we have a problem, believe me, if there is like a mandate that we need it and we need a testing, we'll get it, there's testing sites that need to be done, we'll work on that. That's not a problem, that's not, my problem is educating the people, and and like you said, not pointing students against students, because it's hard. I mean, I felt uncomfortable, I'm vaccinated, and I walked into a place today and eighty percent of the people had masks on like you, um, and I'm going like, is it a mandate in this store, because nothing's on there and nothing, you know, so you're kind of nervous and like, I'm doing something wrong. And and then, you know, I just put it on, I just walked around with it on, I mean, because maybe it made other people, and they were all saying the same thing. Did you mandate it, did you mandate it, is what, why do you have yours on? And they says, I don't know, and I'm going like, I'll say, you need to educate, you need to really educate. Because that we all heard, there's one restaurant that's gonna mandate that you show, if we can book a, um, an appointment inside, inside dining, you have to show your vaccine. Well, that's okay for private business, we can't tell private business what to do, we had that discussion earlier. And, um, but what can we do? Same thing now, the school's making all these things, and I'm getting all these information, what we doing on the city side, we're gonna discuss it, what we can and cannot do, because if you are talking, we even, so do I. So it's not like, so thank God we're starting now, and it's it's not a big spike, and yes, we're gonna do, you know, like you said, the, um, sewer and water and the whole thing, we're gonna do whatever we can to protect everyone. And it's still unfamiliar, what you can and what you can't do, who's passing, who's not. I know that there are people, um, who, whole family, nobody got anything, one person did, very, and and he got, he already had been vaccinated, but it was very light. Symptoms he he received, and he's trying to tell people, I don't know if I would have got COVID if I didn't have the vaccine, what would have happened? And we have friends that in the same family didn't wanna get vaccinated, ended up in the hospital, and the rest of the family ended up with nothing. And it's really like last year, how we started, has someone mentioned how we started, this is it again, and we'll we'll work together.
Um, John, if it's okay with you, I'd just like to request from just the Health Department that we also receive the emails, if the city council is getting.
Well, no, so forgive me, when I say the city council gets it, I mean, uh, joint senos. Uh, I have to, I'm required to give to joint senos as the city court, to then distribute to the city council. So mirroring that same process, we go to Ben for Ben to distribute.
Okay, I got you.
If you could send it to me and Stephanie Delisi, or by the way, Stephanie Delisi.
Yeah.
Send it to Stephanie Delisi, to my executive assistant, just because she's more reliable on the mail than I am.
I always have one.
Okay.
It's a lot to expect, right, for you to be, because they're a waste of.
We'll be, I'll get you.
And it'll be distributed right away, not waiting for a meeting, right? Because we should know that a statement comes out.
We can distribute as soon as Stephanie distributes it, okay? Because you don't want to dwell on distribution on me, okay? It won't be terrific, yeah, so Ben, if you just send me a mail, I'll send you your questions.
Okay. Anything else on this, all right? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All the word. We'll be in touch.
Thank you very much, folks, and thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have a number of business items that we need to take care of. And we need to approve the following on Glaston High School student activity accounts, um, for, uh, photo commissions, SATs, and DECA. Just know these are just.
Just know these are just, um, funds that we're, that pass through money, um, sort of, are, are the organizations, um, and get spent, so, but we do have to send them off. So I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, for the Glosdohelph school student activity accounts, uh, for photo commissions, SATs and DECA.
Okay.
Is any discussion? Read through, roll call, vote.
May it take.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes, Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Clancy, yes.
Yeah. Yes.
And Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Yes, Joel.
Okay, passes unanimously. Um, we also have, um, six grants, um, all from the Department of Health and Secretary of Education. And, um, I will read them off, and I'm gonna vote on together, all at once. And they are, um, the summer school expansion, an, an engagement grant in the amount of twenty-nine thousand sixty-five dollars. Elementary and secondary relief fund three in the amount of four million four hundred and seventeen thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars. Title one, three oh five, in the amount of six hundred and twenty-five thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars. Title four, uh, three oh nine, in the amount of forty-two thousand two hundred and fifty-two. Uh, title three, um, one eighty, in the amount of thirty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. And title two, one forty, in the amount of one hundred and four thousand twenty-four, two hundred and forty-nine dollars. Um, for a total of five million, uh, two hundred and fifty-two thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars.
John, then just so that you know, the S R one, you said six hundred and sixty-one, it's six hundred and eleven at the end.
It says six sixty-one.
I have six one one.
Six six one.
Mine says six six.
I might say six six one.
Yeah. Agenda versus the.
The sheet behind, the sheet behind is different than the cover sheet.
I second the motion on whatever number it's supposed to be.
Yeah.
Okay, well, um.
I vote, I vote that we accept those grants.
We have a motion that we accept these grants, uh, and if, if there's a difference in the amount, we can, uh,
We'll make sure it's correct.
Make that adjustment, uh, Gary will take care of it.
Change number.
Okay, and it's been moved to second, same discussion.
Sad one thing about it is this.
What?
Uh, but that's sort of three, that's, which there, the four point four million dollar one. So just, I wanted to clarify what this means, you're doing is where, that's a, um, it's a COVID relief grant from the, uh, our, uh, uh, act law. Um, you're simply, um, approving the allocation that we get from the state. We have begun, you know, in the, in the, in the, in the last school year, and we need to continue to do some more community outreach and getting input on how to spend those funds. And the, at the, our, um, request, the, or submissions and states do, do not approve forth. You'll, through being able, and this is full committee, engaged in that and learning what we, what we intend and making adjustments, I'm making recommendations, suggestions. But just now, you're just moving that dollar amount coming in from the state, then we have more work to, is, find out what's gonna be used for. Does that make sense?
Okay.
All right, so the motion and a second and some explanations, any further discussion?
I just wanna be clear, that's a multi-year grant, that's.
Yeah, to, to use until September, into September twenty twenty-four, right?
Yeah.
Read the room, roll call.
May it take him.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Kelly Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Plaza.
Yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Yeah, Gary's unanimously, thank you very much. Um, the last item on the agenda is, um, uh, the update on the Sclot the Veterans Memorial School Building Committee. Um, we'll be meeting next week, um, the, um, we'll be going over the, the response that we got for the sixty percent, um, submission, um, and, um, although there was no, I, I, I spoke to our, our OPM today, and they, um, they saw no, um, major, um, points in that. They, they, uh, it's really just, do we include in this on something, it was nothing, there were no major, um, issues. Um, uh, and the preparation of the ninety percent, uh, submission, uh, will be coming up, which will mean that we're gonna be reconciling the budget one more time. And, um, that's happening, I believe, um, uh, towards the end of next week, or, or I saw a date, but it's.
It's beginning.
Before the end of the month.
Yeah.
Um, so we may be looking to cut money again.
Hopefully not, it's not that yet.
But that's, this is another checkpoint on, uh, uh, staying on budget. Um, the building, it has, um, it's being mitigated, uh, for, and they're gonna, uh, move, they moved the trailer in yesterday, the, um, uh, construction trailer.
Fences up.
The fences up, and, uh, things are happening. And, uh, it's, uh, we need to set a date for a, a groundbreaking.
Um, given the resolution of legal issues, has, has that been resolved or?
The, the judgment was dismissed, uh, they, they dismissed the case. But, um, I believe that there's a, there's a period of time where it can be appealed.
Thirty days.
Um, okay, I, I, I don't know whether Melissa says thirty or thirty-sixty. Um, but, uh, when that time expires, uh, we will enter into a, um, a funding agreement with MSPA.
Great, I think it'll be September fourth, I think it's the thirtieth.
I, I also, um, we met earlier in the month, and I don't think this was reported on, um, department committee, where we went through the value inherent items as to getting it, you know, um, compensating for the things that have increased in price to identify items that are either later in the project that maybe we could get back if things change or we, that savings somewhere. Um, and other things that were changes, so one example is the size of the brick is one size, and we went up to the next size. So there's savings and things that, none of them impact the educational program, but they, you know, maybe material choices and things like that.
Yeah, they, there's, there's some that we can add as some alternates on the bid process. Um, things like changing the bridge is pretty much, you can't go back and change that. But there are some things like benches and, and upside benches and things like that. Um, anything else?
And then just St. Anne's is, you know, rolling along, and, um, uh, again, I'll keep on thanking Matt Fusco especially, and also the, the, uh, staff of, um, of the veterans' school for doing a lot of work, um, and just, just, you know, it's a hard effort to, to, um, get the school ready, or, um, the school is essentially, it's not ready yet, there's still a punch list to go, but we're working on that every day, the team's working on it every day. Um, teachers have been in, um, and, uh, working on their rooms. I've talked to kindergarten teachers yet last night, and they're like, they look like kindergarten rooms, they're pretty excited about that. Um, but I'd say obviously fair bit of work, and then, um, uh, so without that as well.
That's having an open house.
Yes, yeah, good, yeah. That's having open, open house for families and students, um, uh, next Thursday. Um, I'll be, oh, attend that, you know, meetings, um, and then, uh, also working to put together a, uh, a Zoom meeting for a neighborhood. Communicate with the neighborhood flyer, then I met with the Fatima who owns and runs of the yellow sub, right?
Yeah.
It was wonderful, and.
Damn, it's such a Gloucester guy.
Um, I didn't order to eat, you know, so I'd be able to do that, I promise, I told her I was gonna buy.
Best tradition Gloucester.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Right, I told her I was gonna buy, uh, diet cookies with this here. Um, but anyway, uh, she was wonderful and very excited about the school coming, and, you know, we just, just was, and, and then her kids went to, um, went to veterans. Um, and anyway, it was just a, a wonderful quick meeting with her. Alyssa Cox and I went in there when we were looking at the traffic and then, and making those adjustments. Alyssa Cox is, uh, right, being very helpful in terms of moving that along the, for the process, please city council, any team that do happen as well, so. All the streets are running and operating around the school area.
All right, um, just before Joel, um, I just wanna apologize if I disappear, I got two percent.
Go ahead.
I'm sitting on Mars and I call him, that's okay. Um, so just in connection with St. Anne's, um, I, I know we just kinda went through this and expanded, um, the policy. I was thinking, so the school committee might still consider, um, looking into again. And I'm, I'll recuse myself as not, I'll put myself in the sample size as a parent. So the, uh, Adam Mayo set up the, the thing for like the quiz for, you know, would you like to, the questionnaire for, would you like to ride the bus, whatever? I said, oh, you know, I'll, I'll try them. My child is, is a school, is an intra-district school choice student and a vet. And so naturally, we got back to the forum saying, oh, you've indicated you're a school choice student, therefore per the school equity policy, you're not eligible. But I was thinking as far as we have like a city councilor about to change traffic patterns because traffic's gonna get messy over there. And, and like, I'll be there a hundred and eighty days with my car, morning and afternoon, clogging up those streets. And there may be other parents who will also, but like, I would, I would happily do the favor of put my kid on a bus and not be one of those parents. And then when the new EG vets opens up, I imagine much like West Parish did when it opened up, it will attract intra-district choice. And again, if we're trying to be accommodating to the Webster neighborhood concerned about this traffic, by telling these parents who are willing to put their child on a bus to alleviate, to go yellow, to go green, et cetera, kind of know, get in the car, get on these crowded streets and clog stuff up. You just, you know, we might learn, and I, again, now that I've put myself into the pool of this, I'll certainly recuse myself from any discussion on it, but just seems kinda funny, I'm gonna be there twice a day, taking up space on those roads, and I would happily put my kid on a bus to not be part of the problem, and maybe other parents out there would go, would also not be part of the problem.
But doesn't that mean one bus would have to go all around the city to pick people up?
No, find my bus stop, I find my bus stop.
Oh, you mean go to a bus.
Yeah, bring, bring the bus stop, New Year's bus stop, drop them up there, you know, not be stuck walking yellow sub.
You know, back in the day, they used to do that, anyone had a bus pass, wherever you, your parents needed to drop you off, you could take any, all that.
Yeah, I, I introduced a kid into West Parish, we go, we should drive this in town, you'll drop this in town, they'll go on the bus and there you go. So we weren't part of the problem that, oh, West Parish, just running out there.
Anything else, anybody would like to, uh?
I just wanna point out, if anybody drives by veterans, Matt has put up a beautiful new sign that says, temporary home of veterans memorial school, which I think is just so cheerful. Just great.
Ben, would it be appropriate for any of us to stop by the open house? Cause I would love to see it.
I, I, I have my, make sure to stop by and see them, actually.
Great.
You follow protocol.
I follow protocol, yeah.
Are we doing a business or something? Yeah.
Go ahead.
I, I just.
Yeah, well, he did it, so that's why I asked. Um, so we had a naming of the school committee meeting that didn't go anywhere, because it was decided that the superintendent was gonna put a plan forward, so I'm just curious of the status of that plan and that name and the process to get there. And I know you might not have an answer tonight, and I know you have a lot on your plate, but you kinda took it away from us, so.
The committee has had a great first meeting.
So just wondering if you could have an update for us at a future meeting about what the plan's gonna be to name the school?
So I did not work on that on my vacation last week, I'll, I'll, I'll admit to that.
All right, we're not having to be a time.
Um, uh, yes, you'll be getting that at a future meeting.
This year.
This year, this fall.
Okay.
I just wanna share one thing. Come on, there we go. Uh, anyone still watching, it's Mr. Fusco, and the new sign, great sign, and of course Eagles do rock.
Eagles do rock.
Just wanna share that. Yeah, I hope Fusco hears about it.
Anything else?
Yes, we gotta get this.
Thank you.
Anything else before we adjourn? Do we have a vote?
What's the case?
Planning a vote.
Roll call, are you?
May it take him.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Kelly Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Plaza.
Yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Good night, thank you very much, this meeting is adjourned, we'll see you next week.